Please come up to the council chambers.
I'm here.
Okay. This meeting is not resumed. Okay, let's vote on the motions. Okay, if we can put the motions on the screen. Okay, motion by Councilor Fletcher. On favor. Carried. Next motion. Motion by Mayor Chow, motion one, on favor. Carried. Motion by Councilor Cheng, on favor. Carried. Motion by Councilor Holliday. Recorded.
Councilor Matlow, please. In the negative. Councilor Carroll, your vote, please verbally. In the negative. Motion 3A does not carry. The vote is seven to nine.
Okay, next motion. By Councilor Holliday. Can you show that motion again? Okay, recorded vote. The mayor, you've asked for a recorded vote, right? Oh, you did. Oh, okay. Because I thought I heard somebody say it.
Councilor Chernuslin and Councilor Ainsley, please. And Councilor Moyes, please. Motion 3B does not carry. The vote is nine to eleven.
Okay, next motion. By Councilor Holliday. Okay, recorded vote on this one?
Yes.
Is that, I think that's redundant, that motion?
Why?
I think that motion is redundant. Yeah. That motion is redundant, okay. Councilor Holliday?
Of order. I'd be happy to challenge the chair on the basis that Council Fletcher's pointed to existing parking facilities that are free. This is all facilities. They're two different things. Very different.
It's not debatable. They challenged the chair. We just voted. It's very bad.
Okay. Challenge the chair, then. The ruling of the chair. This is the second time today somebody's ruled me.
That's nonsense.
Absolutely, I'm upholding the chair.
You got me back, Shelley. I'm back.
Good job.
What nonsense.
You got me back, Shelley.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
You lost me yesterday.
You were a spank bear, weren't you? Yeah, I did. I take it we're already lost.
He's not a great bear.
No.
Councilor Moyes and Councilor Perutz, please. The ruling of the chair is upheld. The vote is sixteen to five.
Next motion. Next motion. I keep a record of all the recorded votes. Point of order, Councilor Perks.
Speaker, my reading of this is it contradicts various sections of our official plan. And given that we haven't given public notice to consider an amendment to the official plan, I'd ask you to rule it out of order. Yeah, it's out of order.
I don't believe that this is out of order.
Okay.
Okay.
I thought I'd try.
Recorded vote. I have to give Holliday a bone once in a while.
Councilor Matlow and Councilor Perutz, please. Councilor Sacks, if you're participating remotely, can you please turn on your camera? Councilor Sacks, if you're participating remotely, can you please turn your camera on? Motion 3D does not carry. The vote is nine to twelve.
Okay, next motion. By Councilor Holliday. Recorded vote.
Councilor Sacks, if you are participating in the meeting virtually, we require you to have your camera on while voting. Councilor Sacks, if you are participating remotely, please turn your camera on.
If they don't have their camera on, they're not here. Yeah.
Motion 3E does not carry. The vote is nine to twelve.
Okay, next, is there another motion? Yeah. Motion by Councilor Fletcher. On favor. Carried. Okay, next more. One more. By Councilor Fletcher. On favor. Carried. Item is amended. On favor. Recorded vote.
Councilor Cheng and Councilor Perutz, please. Councilor Cheng, please, your vote. The item is amended, carries. The vote is nineteen to two.
Our next item is IE twenty-two point four. Do we have questions? This is on the updates on Vision Zero road safety. Do we have questions? If you do, please put your name on the screen. Okay, there's no questions, so speakers. Do we have any speakers? Councilor Perutz, pay attention. No, because he held the item down. Councilor. Councilor Perutz, IE twenty-two point four. Do you have any questions? Okay, so why don't you put your name on? You can speak. Okay, there you are. Okay, Councilor Perutz, go ahead. Oh. There's a question? Okay, can you put your name on if you want a question? Not on my list. Councilor Chernuslin.
I just have one brief question. I'm really happy to see this report. And in particular, I'm thrilled to see many of, a few new pieces, including the pedestrian signals that they can press to have a crossing to make it safer as per Vision Zero. But one of my, well, really, the only question I have is, I have one of these in my ward where there's also a bus that turns. This is the eighty-eight bus in Leeside that turns from Sutherland onto Bayview. And I wonder, do we have technology yet where the TTC driver could activate that signal so that it could also be used for transit priority, but not for cars? Like, the whole point of those is that they're not for cars. They're for pedestrians to activate them, and they're for cyclists to activate it to get across. Like, in that instance, it's to get across at Mount Pleasant Cemetery, where we have a lot of jaywalking. So this is like a really wonderful solution to that. But there's also a bus there, and I just wonder whether we have that technology yet.
Yeah, through the speaker, absolutely. We do have a number of different technology solutions that we can use to provide transit signal priority or separate between modes. So we can definitely take that back with staff to come up with a solution for that intersection.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you. That's it.
No questions. Don't we have everybody asking questions? Councilor Burnside. Questions?
Yeah, thank you. Through you to staff. Do you know the percentage of license plates that were deemed obstructed from the automatic speed enforcement program? If I said it was about twenty-five percent, would that sound right?
I would agree with you.
Okay, so one in four?
Sure.
Okay, that's fine. If I asked you how many people, how many fatalities there were that were related with where speed was a contributing factor in a community safety zone last year? Would you be able to say, if I said there were none, would that make sense to you?
I'm sorry, Councilor, can you repeat the question?
So in a community safety zone, how many fatalities were there where speed was a factor?
I would have to look at the Vision Zero map to figure that out. But certainly in community safety zones, we have focused on safety improvements that aim to reduce people's speed and let people know that speeding is an issue. So I would say, hopefully, the number is pretty low.
Well, so I asked the question already. Not of you, but of your department.
Oh, what'd they say?
Yeah, zero.
Zero, that's great.
That's why I asked you. Would you be surprised? Okay, okay. Would you be surprised, though, that there were eleven fatalities, I believe, where speed was a factor outside of a community safety zone?
I would not be surprised. Again, because the community safety zones, we focus on a suite of tools to help reduce speeding because speed is a huge impact that results in serious injury and fatality.
Okay, and then in terms of the concept that people go over the speed limit because they're not aware of what the speed limit is, what do you think of the idea of making speed limit signs, where it's posted, obviously, larger?
I mean, the speed limits, Speaker, the speed limit signs are directed by the province through the, I believe, through the Highway Traffic Act. And so we don't really have a lot of ability to enlarge those signs. I do think, though, the spacing of those signs is such to try to get people to understand the posted speed limits. They do change. We've just changed them. We've lowered them in a lot of areas of the city to help improve safety. But I'm not sure that a larger sign would yield significant results.
Right, yeah. In fact, I don't want a larger sign, but I was just trying to make a point that the sign, and I do have another answer from your department, that the signs are a, well, I'm teeing it up for a different discussion, but I can only ask you now, that the signs are of a reasonable size to be seen.
Correct.
And that whatever, that we don't need to make them bigger.
That's correct.
Okay, and where the automatic speed enforcement program is in some of the community safety zones, do you think some of the safety zones, the speed limit might be too low? Like, I'll give you an example. Mount Pleasant, south of St. Clair, where it's only forty. Would you?
The speed limits that have been lowered have all been done through council directions.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't dispute that. That wasn't the question, though, respectfully, through the speaker. Do you think some of the speed limits have gone too low? So the reason I'm asking that question might help you answer it, is I'm trying to understand if automatic speed enforcement is the problem of recapturing so many people who are quote-unquote breaking the law, or are some of the laws maybe not aligned with reality?
Speaker, when we set speed limits on roads in the city, we try to balance, and actually, the geometry of the road, which is a huge factor in keeping speeds managed. I would say that we have lowered speed limits significantly on roads because we wanted to make sure that people had the knowledge that speed is the main factor in killing and serious injury when there's a crash. And so I would say that it's possible that in some parts of the city, the speed limits and the geometric characteristics of the road don't always align. So to your point, there might be some locations where you might be inclined to go a little bit faster than the posted speed limit because of the geometry of the road, a curve, a hill, a wider lane, that kind of thing. Does that help you?
Well, that's very helpful, thank you. And then my last question relates to the non-community safety zones. There's, we talked, just asked about how there were eleven speed-related fatalities. Are we doing enough in those non-community safety zone areas, given that the number of tickets written by police in a ten-year period went down eighty percent? It seemed, my impression is like we're adding all these cameras to these very defined area, but I'm not sure what our strategy is outside of those areas, where there might be more of a problem.
That was your last question?
Speaker, we've, so I do think there's more that we can do. As I mentioned, changing geometry, a lot of what we do in Vision Zero is around trying to make turns tighter, to make lanes a little a little bit narrower, to create a situation where drivers are going to slow down. We have our watch your speed signs that help to do that, and in the community safety zones, most of which are, have school zones involved, or they have seniors involved, where we have vulnerable road users to try to have enough infrastructure there to let people know that they need to slow down. This report itself actually adds a number of community safety zones to the ones that we already have in place, so we are expanding that number based on need. And I do think that there are things that we can continue to do outside community safety zones to help manage speed in the city.
Thank you. Councillor Perks.
Thank you, I have some questions about automated speed enforcement. I have some experience of this in my ward. We have done some testing before and after about the average speeds of vehicles traveling in areas where we install automated speed enforcement, yep?
Speaker, that's correct.
And I'm only familiar with one data set, the Parkside data set, but we did find that after they were installed, there was a significant reduction in average speed.
That's correct.
And there was a significant reduction in the number of vehicles going more than ten kilometers an hour over the speed limit.
Correct.
And given that you've said that speed is a factor in fatalities, would you say that automated speed enforcement saves lives?
Absolutely, and I would point to a new study just released by Sick Kids that also reviews the program. There was one about two years ago that did the same, and found that automated speed enforcement had a significant effect on improving safety for people driving by reducing speed.
So Sick Kids Hospital has done studies, two of them now?
Yes, they just released another one.
Okay, and they have found that by our automated speed enforcement program is saving lives?
Correct.
Councillor Matlow.
Thank you. So to follow up on Officer Burnside's, questions to you. The, to, so just to confirm, we do, where we have automated speed enforcement, we do have signage ahead of the camera to provide drivers notice that they're going into a zone where they can be photographed.
Speaker, we do, there are a number of signs that are required by the province who oversees the program, including that we have to put in advance warning signs before we put the cameras in, so when we're thinking of a place where we have a location that we're going to add cameras, we have to put signs in. And then when the cameras are in and operational, we have an advance sign, and then we have a sign at the location.
And then to reiterate, the type of signage, what it looks like, size, all of that, is prescribed by provincial legislation, we can't just make it up by moving a motion.
Correct, and it applies to every location in the province.
If, if a driver drives, let's say, one mile over the speed limit, one kilometer, rather, over the speed limit, is it, will they necessarily, if they're caught by the camera, would they necessarily have a ticket mailed to them? Is it, you know, two kilometers over, is there some sort of, I wouldn't call it grace, that would be generous, but a recognition that sometimes the foot can get a little heavy or a little light, but may not be exactly on the exact kilometer allowed?
So, when we developed the program, we worked with the Ontario Chiefs of Police and the Toronto Police Service and other justice sector partners to create a reasonable range, and that range is applied. And we also have provincial offences officers who are looking and identifying and looking at the circumstances of those image captures before those tickets are issued.
Okay, so if one were, let's say, hyperbolically to describe this as simply a speed trap, and, you know, if you do like one kilometer over, would that be a fair characterization?
Could you repeat the question?
If one were to hyperbolically describe the automated speed enforcement as simply a speed trap, and that you could be dinged by going just like, just a little bit over the prescribed speed limit, is that a fair characterization of this? Or am I hearing you correctly, that there is some reasonable recognition that you may not be right on the, you know, the exact speed limit, but it's about slowing people down and preventing tragedies?
Correct, so I would say that it is hyperbolic. I would say that is not a fair characterization of the program, the first part, and then for the second part, yes, the program is designed and intended to provide a threshold that is reasonable, as if you were an officer who was also making that judgment on the ground.
If there were any reasons to review the, excuse me, guys, if I may just ask you to tone it down a little bit. If there was a reason to review or reconsider anything about the program, would it be preferable to just shut it down for a while and suspend it? Or would you want to constantly review and update and improve as it continues to do the work it's doing?
Speaker, we believe that automated speed enforcement is a critical piece of the Vision Zero program, because speed is such a huge factor in leading to serious injury and fatalities when people do get hit, especially for our most vulnerable road users. So we think it's a critical program. As I've said many times before, if we did not get a dollar from this program, that would be fantastic, because it would mean that nobody would be speeding. But we absolutely think it's a critical program, and we would much rather look at what we could do to manage the public's expectations, rather than eliminate the program absolutely.
So eliminating the program, or suspending the program, the likelihood of somebody dying goes up?
If, I would say absolutely.
And then lastly, I have a motion that your staff worked with my office on about just providing reasonable timeframes for when a Vision Zero project is approved. Do you support the intent of that motion?
I do, thanks for working with staff on it, I think it's manageable.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Crisanti.
Thank you, speaker. Just to pick up on a couple of points that councillor Matlow just made, and starting with the advance warning signs, in terms of their placement. So I'm getting some calls from people, and I've noticed it myself as well, and will report them as we notice these particular issues. So the complaints or concerns I'm getting is that these signs are being placed, sometimes in behind very mature trees, they're not placed in spots where you could easily, readily read them. And also with respect to the size of those signs, advance warning people that there's a speed camera coming up ahead. Can you speak to that? What can we do to ensure that we take better care, better attention as to, A, will we place them, and B, can we increase the size of them? You blink, you miss it. So if the idea is to have a proper advance warning, can we do a better effort in ensuring that that's what it does?
So councillor, I will have staff go out first thing and take a look to make sure that they are unobstructed, because it is very critical that those signs provide appropriate advance warning. If you have locations in your ward where you think a sign is obstructed, please let us know, and we will make sure to get it moved. As for the size of the sign, as I mentioned earlier, the sign itself is prescribed by the province, and it's used consistently through the province, and there's placement guidelines related to that. So I, really, we, our intention is for people to be well-informed. I also know that people who are using apps like Waze or Google will get an automated notice that says there's a speed camera ahead, and so that's helpful for people who use those directional apps.
All right, good, thank you. With respect to the threshold, again, this is not intended to be sort of a cash grab, and people are suggesting that, you know, they feel that in some cases it is. I agree, this is all about safety, not about cash. If you don't earn a nickel from this, you know, from our speed cameras, then that's great, but we do, we bring in a good revenue from the cameras. Is the threshold reasonable, and of course, you're going to say yes, but, and is, I guess the information is not public in terms of the threshold, is, we don't want to make it public.
Right.
But is the threshold reviewed? Because road conditions change, and there are a lot of good drivers out there, and if they, they hit the forty or fifty kilometer mark, and then there's a bit of a dip on the road, and the car just naturally picks up three, four kilometers in speed, and then goes back to what the speed should be, and then they get dinged for a ticket. So that's, they're not speeding, that's just the natural progression of what happens. You know, speeding is the natural intent. Now, if you're doing, it's at fifty, and you're doing seventy, that's speeding. It's at fifteen, you're doing sixty or more, that's speeding.
What is your question? What is your question?
My question is, my question is, is the threshold reviewed periodically to make sure that it's absolutely reasonable?
Councillor, to the speaker, I feel very confident that the thresholds that were established for the program, again, were done in careful consideration of not only our own police force, but also the Ontario Chiefs of Police. In terms of the review, I am not sure how often the actual thresholds are reviewed, but I will tell you that we do have a table of all the jurisdictions around the province, and that, I believe, includes some representatives from law enforcement, where if there are issues or concerns that are raised about people's programs, that we will bring it to that table also to have that conversation. So again, I would agree with you, the goal of the program is in no way revenue generation, the goal of the program is solely safety, and if you don't speed, you don't get a ticket.
So you've just said, though, that it's not reviewed regularly?
I think that the-
Or they're not aware?
I think that the, perhaps a more critical factor is the location and placement of those cameras in places that can actually support those thresholds and make sure that they're not in places where it is challenging for people to be able to respond appropriately with the right level of speed. I'm not sure if I'm making myself clear, but I'm not sure that the review of the thresholds frequently is as important as the placement characteristics and where those cameras are placed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Holiday, questions?
Yeah, just a couple. Just on the issue of thresholds, again, without going in revealing secrets that, you know, could compromise the program, in principle, where an ASE is put into a thirty kilometer an hour zone, is the threshold smaller or bigger? In recognition that it's, you know, governing a vehicle in a thirty kilometer an hour zone is a little more challenging.
Sorry, sorry for the delay. Sorry to the speaker. During the development of the Automated Speed Enforcement Program, staff worked really closely with both Toronto Police and also justice partners. To basically ensure that we set the thresholds reasonable within each one of those respective areas and consistent with the police operation, regardless of location, right?
Okay. There's a community safety zone change in a Tobago Centre that I just wondered if you could help me understand. It's Royal York between Anglesey and Dundas. Now, I can't think of a school there, so I wondered if you could just generally explain staff's approach to designated, to designating community safety zones, because we started out with them around schools. But where are you taking us now with them?
I'll start, and I'll probably turn it to Jaclyn to finish, but I, we did, in fact, so, the Community Safety Zone Program, speaker, is one that was in place for many years and had not only school zones, but also other locations, like, if you remember the conversation about Parkside Drive originally, that was one of the older community safety zones that was then brought into the Community Safety Zone Program when we reinstituted it. And then, you're right, as part of the Safer School Zones Act, they were focused on schools. In the last Vision Zero report that I believe we brought, either in January of this year or the year previous, we created an expanded version of community safety zones that included things like senior centers or other areas or services that had higher groupings or concentrations of vulnerable road users, like people with disabilities or young children, maybe, community centers. And so that's a bit of an expansion of the definition of community safety zone that we've been applying. And I don't know if we know what safety zone that the councillor is asking about constitutes.
Through the speaker, I don't have the specifics about the change, but what I can say, this is not a new community safety zone that we're designating, we're making adjustment through this bylaw change to an existing community safety zone, but I'll get further details about that for you.
And that's fine, I don't mean to put you on the spot about a detail in the report, it's more of just a general understanding of the approach, because I wondered if you could tell me how I would respond to people when they say, hey, you should make this a community safety zone, because I think there should be ASE there. And surely, we have some rationale, it's a big city. And so how do you help me with answering those questions?
Yes, we do, and we can certainly, and it might be timely, councillor, for us to put together a little bit of information that would be appropriate for newsletters to just remind people.
On the web.
Because we have kind of expanded the definition, and we do get requests from councillors or from the public to put speed cameras in a number of different places that are not community safety zones, and we are not able to move forward with that request. But we do believe that there are populations like seniors, I know councillor Burnside added one not too long ago, that was about, there was a bunch of senior housing in the vicinity, and so we reviewed it through that lens as well.
Okay, and I got one more, it's technical. Is it possible, or do we know, it's two parts. Do we know, do the ASE cameras or the red light cameras, do they operate on intervals? Like, they're on, and then they're off, and random or not random, or are they continuously monitoring? And then the second half of that is, if council wanted to be prescriptive and say, we'd like the ASE camera to operate twelve out of the twenty-four hours, but randomly, or we'd only like it to work on Sundays, or some prescription that takes it down from twenty-four, seven, to something else, is that technically possible? And could we, is it possible to ask you to give some thought to those ideas?
Speaker, I think it's possible to ask us to give some thought to those ideas. I believe if council directed us, they would be effectively directing enforcement, which is not what we do, so.
Right, but you could, and do we know, the first part of my question, do they actually already automate on intervals, or are they always twenty-four, seven?
That was your last question.
They are always on.
Okay, thank you.
And councillor, just to follow up on your previous question about Dundas and Royal York, that location was previously brought forward in a report in 2024, and this is an adjustment to that location. It's because of a seniors, a seniors home in that area and some collision history with mid-block crossings.
Councillor Chang, questions?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So recently, we had a goal as a community or a vision to install speed humps, and you would have thought that I was going to kill people with the installation of speed humps, but one of my constituents consulted paramedic services, who confirmed that every speed hump slows them down. And so I had impassioned deputations from community members about how they'd had heart attacks and how they could feel every hump that they drove over. So I'm just wondering, you know, what is the gap here? We have Vision Zero, but we also have emergency services saying all of these things that we install for Vision Zero slow emergency services down.
Speaker, I think there's definitely, this is not an uncommon issue in cities about the tools that we use on roads to help people travel at the right speeds all the time, that can have impacts on intermittent trips. And emergency response, we work very closely, especially with fire services, on the placement of speed humps. We have a couple of new tools, including speed cushions, that we can put in locations that might be near stations or in places where we have buses that can, are gauged to the tires of a larger truck, so that the truck can go over them, but a car will have the effect of the speed hump. So there are some tools that we can put in place. I do think that if speeding is an issue in neighborhoods, even on local streets, it certainly, I, maybe we could ask paramedics, I don't believe they're here, but we could go back to ask paramedics what they think the actual amount of time is, but it is usually a relatively modest impact to response times and a significant improvement in terms of local road safety. And that's why we put them in.
So I would like to see a greater alignment, because we did invite paramedic services- services to a community meeting, and they have a very boilerplate answer, which is that it slows them down, and they won't comment further than that. So when people start to, you know, make their own math and they start to worry, so now it feels, they feel like they have to choose between how they're going to be responded to in an emergency versus the speed of people on our streets. So I really, I think it's, it's creating a conflict, the fact that, you know, it's not, I think, a unified approach. And I guess to that end, you know, have we considered what Ottawa and Markham have done, which is, they do have the flex stakes on both sides of the street. They, in Ottawa, they implement thousands of them every year, and they remove them in the winter for snow removal, but they've found them to be very effective in slowing people down without the addition of humps everywhere.
Speaker, I do think that, you know, we always look to other cities to see what they're doing and see how that would be applied in our city. In particular, Ottawa, I know we've, we have engagement with both Ottawa and Montreal and Halifax, and they're all involved in our Transportation Association of Canada, where we share and create best practices for, for Canada. I'll go back to the speed humps themselves. I will say that the current design of them and how high they are and how wide they are was based on review with emergency services. And I would also agree with you, there's a lot of drivers of emergency vehicles who are trying to get where they need to go quite quickly, and I think we can have more conversation with emergency services about what our messaging is, and, and also continue to work with them on how to make their, their trips more straightforward as well.
That would be very helpful, because we just don't want residents feeling like they're choosing between speed humps and their safety in a 911 situation.
Okay.
And would you consider the analysis of the dual flex stakes on a road as a potential addition to our speed calming toolbox?
I see that my good friend Vic is here, and I'll, I'll have him address perhaps some questions about paramedics, but I will tell you that we already are using the flex stake approach that you described from Ottawa in a, in a number of locations in Toronto. I was just informed by staff.
Okay, thank you. You know, members, we don't want to come back tomorrow. Like, you know, when we first started this item, nobody had any questions. Now everybody's putting their name up as, so how many people want to come back tomorrow to finish the agenda?
Right.
Okay. So, because we have to make up our mind. Counselor Carroll?
Just a very quick question. I just wanted to follow up, because I just heard Ms. Gray talk about, maybe we could hand things out. In terms of Vision Zero, it's not in, in great detail here. It's a thing that you have delegated authority to do, but if we're making communication pieces, the thing I spend most of my time with communities on is when we narrow an intersection on a neighborhood street that feeds into an artery, that we're doing to make people slow down, be more intentional in those turns. And I've had to do many site visits, because they never believe that you've actually measured them before doing them. Is there a one-sheet or a two-sheet available that we could send out so that people understood how you do, use the measurements in the Highway Traffic Act, et cetera, et cetera, to do that?
Speaker, we would be happy to do that, councillor, and if, if you, that, that's one great example. If you have a couple of others, we're happy to put that together. We've done a similar campaign in the past about when we introduced some new bike tools that we were able to bring forward--
Right.
--and we also, we have campaigns on Vision Zero, as you know, a couple times a year, but I think it would be very, not hard to do, and something that would be very valuable to do at the, at the neighborhood level if you have those examples.
Yes, because we're, we're all so digital in terms of how we get things out to residents. So if I'm, I'm producing something like that for a neighborhood, I just as to do it anywhere, so that if in the future you use delegated authority to do another intersection, they've already been, been made live to that idea.
We're happy to do that, councillor.
And then, lastly, the other place that you, you touched on it, there's a lot of talk about, and questions, I'm hearing people ask about the threshold, and what if we did this, and what if we did that? The person who's viewing the camera footage and sending out the, the infractions to, to the resident, they get to make that decision, don't they? They are enforcing in that moment.
Correct, and they are provincial offences officers.
Right. And because they are officers, we can't tell them what their threshold should be today or any other day.
That is correct.
Thank you, thank you. Those are my questions, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Mayor Child to speak.
I have several, two, two motions, and display them in a minute. Let me tell you about Christina Hong, a kind student over at Albert Campbell Collegiate. And she was just walking to school, 15-year-old, grade nine, make me consider my grandkid. And she was--
Did you make your motion?
I did, I mentioned it. I hope they just play it. Yeah, I'm moving those two motions in front of you, and I'll talk about it briefly later on. One's about funding, the other one is about big, loud signs. She was killed on March 26, 2025 of this year. And July of this year, a 42-year-old pregnant pedestrian was crossing a crosswalk in Councillor Moise's area in Queen and Sackview, and she was struck, killed. They tried to save the baby, who later died that year. And the crosswalk was directly in front of elementary school in the early on years, meaning it's a safety zone. And those of you who probably remember, May of this year, again, a mom with three kids, 15, Ramon, Jay, and Meyer, they were all killed by a speeding driver. This was on Rennford Drive and Highway 401. She works for TTC and was known and loved by her coworkers. Why do I mention all these names? These are names of people that are killed, pedestrians on the street. Well, in the last one, it was, she was in the car. I went back to 2016 to look at the beginning of when we put together Vision Zero. At that time, there was a young, there was a 42-year-old mom who was killed, her name is Erica Stark, on the sidewalk. Her death shattered a family. Her husband was unable to work for months. Three children were totally devastated. One talked about committing suicide. She was hit so far, so hard, she died in a few minutes, speeding again. So how do we change behavior, drivers' behavior, that are driving too fast? That's the key thing. And since then, we established Vision Zero. We know that people that are older than 65 more chance, in terms of statistically, are the ones that are killed, because maybe they are slower in walking through a street. And the motions in front of all of this is really, we're talking about speed camera, automated speed camera. It does slow people down, and I do understand that sometimes it's not fair, because all of a sudden, there's a camera there, you didn't know there's a camera there, and I, sometimes when I, on the street, I try to look to see if you can find the camera. We have these really little signs that you can put out, if you can't see it, then you're not warned. But if our, what we try to do is to tell people there's a speed camera, they will slow down if they see it. If they don't, if they're speeding, they deserve a ticket, okay? They should not be speeding, because these are in school zones, these are in community zones. They are picked, this area is picked because of the highest number of fatalities or, or accidents. And at the time, in 2016, nine years ago, they were noticed that every four hours, a pedestrian was hit, someone dies every 10 days, right? So, but reduction in speed works. So the first motion in here is, the second motion is to say, why don't we have big signs, loud signs, so that people will slow down and they won't get a ticket? We don't want people to get tickets, we just want them to slow down. Make the signs as big, as loud as possible. Put it in their face, okay? Put it everywhere. Warn them ahead of time if, if the, if the camera is just arriving. And also, some people, they didn't know they got a ticket, they haven't received one, so they drive through that same area, same, same location, and get hit over and over, well, and get a ticket over and over again. So let us look at, limit the number of tickets and individuals issued before they receive their first notice in the mail. Let them get the notice in the mail, and they're shocked, then they probably will slow down. Okay? So that's the first motion. The second motion is to take the funds, sorry, it's taking so long, taking the funds and use it specifically, if, if possible, on improving safety. Thank you. I hope we can get support of these two motions.
Thank you to the mayor. From your, from your speech, my understanding is you want people to reduce their speed, yeah?
Yep.
Okay.
Because we know that the lower the speed--
No, no, that's good.
--the less damage they have.
No, I get it, okay. There, no, but I asked the question, I got the answer, it's all, it's all good. Relax here, Gordon. Okay, so recognizing that we don't have as many speed cameras as we have community safety zones, shouldn't, shouldn't we, shouldn't the goal be to get people to slow down, at least in the community safety zones, whether there's a camera there or not?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, but there are--
So would it not, oh, sorry, go ahead.
So there are, there are, in each ward, three cameras already, and then what we're doing in community safety zones, we are rotating--
Oh, yeah, no, I know the system, yeah.
Right?
So, but if the goal is to get people to slow down in community safety zones, whether there's a camera there or not--
Right.
--I don't, would it not make sense to have the community safety zone sign big?
Absolutely.
As opposed, like, it seems counterintuitive to me that we're saying, hey, you have to slow down because you're going to get a ticket. It should be, you have to slow down.
We should do both.
But--
We should warn people that, hey, there's a, there's a sign. Now, if you have ways, it, it will tell you--
Well, if you do.
--that there's a camera there, right? Then you'll slow down. But if you don't use ways, then they should, you know, there should be warning signs that are so big that you will slow down and you wouldn't get a ticket.
Sure, but shouldn't the sign, the important sign be, here's the speed limit, whether it's 50, 40, or 30?
Yep.
Because, you know, respectfully, people, if they don't know whether there's enforcement or not, and they're scared there might be enforcement, that's a lot more powerful, because we only have three signs out of maybe 20 community safety zones in a ward. So I'm, I just, I'm trying to understand why you would want to tell people, for those, just in those three areas, oh, you better be careful because you're going to get a ticket, when compliance, we want it throughout all of our community safety zones.
I'm not opposed in putting big signs saying that this is a community safety zone, please slow down, the speed limit is 40 or 30, whichever. And also, because we are debating automatic speed enforcement cameras, so what we need to do is to warn people that whatever the speed limit is, right?
So then, I guess my last question, is it three minutes, Madam Speaker?
Okay.
Okay, but respectfully, I don't ask a lot of questions, so. So then, if, okay, you know what, I'll let you go, that's fine.
This is to warn them, there are, there's cameras at you, right?
Okay, Mayor, there's another question for you. Counselor Carroll?
Yes, I'm hoping there's, I'm hoping there'll be, there's more than one way to skin the cat here. The, the last motion that you moved here, sorry, was that politically incorrect to cat lovers everywhere?
Two birds, one stone.
Okay, sorry. To be limiting the number of infractions, as you heard in my question, we actually can't tell the person reviewing the footage how many tickets he gives or not. That would take a provincial regulation change, or they just, they get the five tickets in one week, and they dispute some, and we could decide that, we could instruct the alternative dispute resolution people how to approach that, that situation.
Yeah.
So what I'm wondering is if you want to report back on how we're going to do that?
Sure.
Because the way it reads now, part two, it does not look like you, you want to report back, you just want that to happen, and it's going to, it's going to require a little bit of regulation change.
I, I'm open to your suggestion, please amend it, that it would achieve the same results, whichever way it works.
Yeah.
Because sometimes I've heard of incidents where they, on the same camera, go back and forth, and they get four or five tickets in a row, and they have no idea.
I understand why to do, I can't remember, it's a road that starts with an R in Counselor Holliday's word, and, and the premier is particularly focused on it, where people get five tickets in a week. But we, we've got a, AI could help us sort this out, but we still need that regulation change.
Okay.
Okay. I'll do that friendly piece.
Whatever you--
Great, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Chang, do you have a question? Counselor Chang?
Yes, yes, I do, thank you.
I have to ask members of council, please turn on your video, because we can't have people shutting off the video and losing quorum.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just a couple of questions for the mayor. So I, I see this request for a larger sign about the deployment of speed cameras, and for me, I see the signs that, that are there, and I've never found them to be too small, and I'm always grateful to see them so that I'm alerted that one is coming. I'm just wondering, has there been a lot of complaints that the signs are not big enough?
There's been complaint to say, I didn't know there's a camera there. I didn't know it was arriving. I haven't been warned enough, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't know there's a camera. That's quite common. And when did you put that in? How come it's there? Because some, they rotate, right? They rotate from time to time.
But before they put the camera in, there's always a, a period of time where there's a sign that comes up that says, it is coming, automatic speed enforcement is coming.
I know.
So I feel like we have been actually doing a really good job to let people know, and the people who are complaining are just not paying attention. And, and in fact, you know, our, our great manager of traffic services in North York, Sean Dillon, he has this great diagram that shows when people are speeding, you're--
Counselor Chang, please ask your question, please.
I'm just wondering, you know, are we trying to, because how much money will this cost? Have we costed the, this out, printing new, larger, more visible signs?
I don't believe signs are that expensive. If it, if there are some drivers that can't see the sign, maybe you pay a lot more attention than some drivers.
Maybe they shouldn't be driving if they can't see.
Yeah.
Really?
There might be some truth to it. But that, that's a common complaint. I didn't know there's a speed camera there, I, I haven't been warned, I can't see the sign, you hear this often, right?
They, they have been warned, but, okay, thank you, that's not my question.
Then they shouldn't have, they shouldn't have a driver's license.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Peruzzi to speak.
I too have, have a motion, and I would ask the clerks to put that up on the screen and attempt to describe it. I also just want to thank the mayor's office for helping us out with this, and, and I think it's a, it's a, it's, it's a really good motion that gets us, I believe, to a very good place. I too, Speaker, want to just revisit where we are and where this came from. I was in Terra Cina, Italy in 2013, at the beginning of the school year, and I got the most distressing phone call-- most distressing phone call on, I believe it was September 2nd or 3rd, 2013. At the corner of Lamberton and Sentinel, a young student on the first day to school in my area, across from Alia Middle School, headed to CW Jeffries, was hit and run over by a truck, and died. Violet Liang was the young student's name. It was an absolutely distressing moment for me. I came back here to this council, crafted a motion, brought it to the floor of council, and with the help of then-Counselor Gary Crawford, this issue about us having to do something about safety began to gain traction and momentum, and two years later, we had this Vision Zero program. I fundamentally, absolutely, 100% believe in the program. To get to zero deaths, zero injuries on our roadways. That's where we need to get to, and that's where we need to go. So we deployed a program within which we got permission and deployed these automated speed enforcement cameras. I believe fundamentally that overwhelmingly, people want to follow the rules. They do. We just need to make the rules clear. If you're driving on Islington Avenue, south of Albion, a road that normally the speed limit is 60 or 70, major arterial road, as you head down a hill, the speed limit changes, it drops to 50. You missed, exactly, you missed the speed sign, there's one speed sign that says that the speed limit is lowering. That's it. You missed that speed sign, you're done, you get zapped. Now, did you want to miss the speed sign or not lower your speed? No. It just, sometimes, they're not very clear, you're not paying attention, or as much attention as you should be, to where all these signs are. There are often too many, you can't, you got ways, you got this, you got that, you got the other, and you got your kids in the backseat. Exactly, and that's what happens, and that's where people are getting frustrated. You could go on Duncan Woods Avenue, on Duncan Woods Road, adventure, anybody here, you go on Duncan Woods, you drive on it, and you tell me what the speed limit is. You wouldn't know. And who gets caught on that, on that, on that camera? People who live in the neighborhood, who have been driving that street their whole lives. Do they want to drive dangerously, or recklessly, or fast on the street? No, absolutely not. Many times, you just don't know what the speed limit is. And you get tickets, and then people get frustrated, the cameras are, you know, a face gray in most cases, you don't see them. So, very little signage around speeds, one at the beginning, when you enter the community, not on the roads. So unless you say, oh geez, what's the speed limit in this neighborhood? Is it 40 or 30? So, so you get caught, and therein lies the frustration. Where do I want to get to? Where would I like to go with this? I'd like to get to a place where everybody's behavior changes, where they slow down. But you need to know what the speed limit is, you need to know what you're up against.
Thank you. We do have questions for you.
And that's what the, that's what the, these motions intend to do.
Counselor Chernis Lynn?
Thank you, to the mover. To the mover, I'd like a clarification on Part A to start. Is what you're trying to do to ensure that you have enforcement during sort of school hours, busier hours, as opposed to at night, is that what that means?
No, what that means is that I'm asking for a report black on looking at some flexibility around how all of the program works, how it's deployed, so that people know what the rules are, follow the rules, aren't frustrated by the rules-
Part A, though.
And we get to safety, yes.
Counselor, Part A, a review of the core hours of operation for ASE enforcement cameras, to focus on the needs arising out of community safety zones where they are placed.
Correct. So, as I described, on Islington Avenue, for example, a major arterial road, south of Albion, it's four lanes, speed limit there, I believe, is 70 kilometers an hour. At some point, because there's a school, it drops to 50 kilometers an hour. Now, if you're driving there at 2:00 in the morning, there is no school.
So it is, so just to, so to answer the question, what I was asking is, are you looking to see that it's only enforced during school hours or high-peak hours? That sounds like what it is, what you're asking.
No, what I'm, what I'm asking is for you, Counselor, and me, to have a reasonable conversation, that if 2:00 in the morning, somebody gets caught on Islington Avenue, where the speed limit is 70, but the automated camera gets them at 50-
Counselor, that's not the question, that's not the question.
I was seeking to understand, which I think I now understand, you don't want it to apply at night, so-
No, what I'm saying is that we should have a conversation about that.
Okay, okay.
My second question is just with respect to painting lines where these are-
Oh, there you are, I thought you were online.
I'm here, I'm right here.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. I thought you were online, sorry. I apologize.
Yeah, no, I'm right here.
All right.
Um, part, I don't even know what to say, Part C, where you're asking pavement markings, these aren't always permanent, so you're looking for permanent pavement markings, have you assessed the cost on that?
Yeah, so, so-
Can you ask, just the question is around cost, have you asked for an assessment of costs on that?
Okay, so, the program, the money that comes from the program goes back into the program. In fact, when Vision Zero, the school safety zones, were created, part of the school safety zone was pavement markings, so that you know, before we had enforcement cameras, so that you know that you are coming into a school safety zone district, very clearly, very visibly. We never got, in most cases, we never got the markings, we should get them.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. Counselor Burnside, please. Clarification of the motion.
Just hang here, no, just sit here. So, yeah, just a couple of questions, just for clarification. You said one of your concerns is that people have a lot going on, kids in the car, they're not paying attention. Isn't that kind of the issue? Should they, if they're driving a car, should they not kind of be paying attention? Isn't that kind of more of a problem than the-
Correct, correct, you want to change the behavior, there's no question. But what I, what I said was, it's very, very easy to miss a road sign that lowers the speed limit, especially when some of these signs aren't placed in very visible locations. And I, and I think that's why the mayor has moved this motion on, let's make these signs bigger, because that's a complaint we're getting back. And you, as a former officer, I would think that you would have heard this complaint over and over again about, well, I didn't see that sign, officer.
And I said, too bad.
That's the, and in uniform, nobody's going to challenge you on that one, right?
Okay, Counselor Burnside.
I'm just saying, but, okay, and then, so then, my other question, which is a little, is just as serious, is you make a point, and I take that point, but wouldn't one of the ways forward might be to change some of the speed limits? Because what I've sort of inferred from what you're saying is, some of these locations, the speed limits aren't, don't really fit the road, who's using the road, who's, the pedestrians, cyclists, whatever. So as opposed to necessarily focusing just on the ASE, shouldn't it be more, or at least at the same time, looking at the actual speed limits? Because have we not lowered some of the speed limits to unrealistic levels?
Exactly, so this is why I refer to Islington Avenue, for example, where, where, when you come into the school zone, the speed limit has come down to 50 kilometers an hour on a major arterial roads. I, I, I can consent to that, because you want to, in answer to, who I believe was Chernos Lynn, but at 2:00 in the morning, for, when, for example, there are no students there, there is no school, then why are we, why in that stretch, for example, does the speed limit come down to 50 when the, when the rest of it is 70? Couldn't we look at that, and couldn't we have the discretion?
A variable speed limit?
Yeah, exactly. Couldn't the camera then have the discretion to say, you know what?
Well, you'd have to change the speed limit, right? I think the law.
Thank, thank you, thank you. Thank you. Okay, now, okay, let's move on. Counselor Matlow to speak.
And I want to thank staff for working with us on the motion. Often when we, when we have Vision Zero initiatives approved, including stop control at intersections, traffic control signals, pedestrian crossovers, et cetera, speed humps, et cetera, in many ways, we set ourselves up for some failure based on the expectations that our communities have, and then it can take literally years sometimes to have them actually put in place. So this is about creating reasonable timeframes to meet reasonable expectations about moving forward with something that we know is urgent, which is road safety. And again, I want to thank staff for their support. I want to just say a very brief comment about this debate. We cannot, it is not realistic, nor should it be, to have police officers standing on every single street in our city. That's why we're using technology. And that technology is there because, it's not because we want to catch people, it's because if you are speeding and breaking the law, you're putting yourself in that position. That's the whole point. And the mayor is correct, that it's not even about wanting to get that revenue, we prefer them not to speed in the first place so that people are safer. So, you know, there are a lot of people who will care about other people and care about other people's safety. Some people need an incentive to care about their wallet, frankly, because they're not, they're acting selfishly, they're not caring about other people. And yes, sometimes people lose track and don't know exactly, they just lose track, whatever, they're tired, they're in a rush, they don't think for a moment, and that's why I think it's reasonable to give people warnings, to remind them of the consequences if they continue that behavior. That all being said, our general manager said it very clearly, if we don't have automated speed enforcement, if we're considering removing it at 2:00 in the morning, for example, people are more likely to die. There is speeding at 2:00 in the morning, believe it or not. And I don't care if it's 2:00 in the afternoon or 2:00 in the, in the morning, if you're hit by a car speeding, you are more likely to die. So that's why it's there. So, like, with all due respect, I feel like we've had this whole debate over a press release that was put out, and it's just, it's nonsense. This is not a good use of anyone's time. I want us to move forward with keeping our city safe, and frankly, even the ignorance of a law is not an excuse, in court or otherwise, for not obeying it. That's why the signage is important, we want to let people know, but ultimately, if you do not speed on our roads, you have nothing to fear.
I don't know why we're debating this, really. Counselor Moise.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, the irony of this is that this morning, we talked about traffic congestion in downtown core and across the city, and here we are now talking about slowing things down for safety. The mayor mentioned earlier that there was a tragic accident in my ward last year where a pregnant mother, you know, died, and had emergency section, and the child died a few hours later. I was very much involved in that, my office arranged the funeral and providing space for community to gather and so forth. It was quite traumatic. And talking to the community afterwards, you know, many people came up to me and said, like, we've had very close calls ourselves. People were struck by vehicles, children running across the street, you know, almost being hit by vehicles, suggestions was made to me as to where perhaps we can put a traffic light or a speed bump. And of course, talking to transportation, I'm happy to see that many of the suggestions that I made are actually here in this report and this update. A lot of people, people don't realize that, for example, Jarvis, for example, has eight elementary and secondary schools from Front Street to Blow Street, including a college and a university, which is, but which is 10. And that is a street where people, you know, speed from one end to the other every day. And I see the close calls on a regular basis, and it scares the heck out of me. So I really support Vision Zero in a way that, you know, I can, I cannot continue to tell you how important it is. I don't want to see any more deaths in the city or in the downtown core. I know that one of the counselors mentioned that, you know, well, it was Counselor Perutzza said, well, you know, like, maybe we should change the, the speed of streets, you know, during the day versus the evening. But I can tell you, when kids go home at, in the evenings, go to bed, in the evening, older people come out, and the streets are just as busy. Well, you know, we want, you know, with the night economy, we want people to come out and have a good time, but we also want them to be safe as well in downtown core. I'm one of those people, let me tell you, not a drunk, but, you know, I'm out there eating, you know, and having a great time. So we need people to come to the city, but come safely. I went out for lunch, and I walked down Bay Street earlier today, and it was 12:00 noon, and there is many people on the sidewalks, more people on the sidewalks than there are cars in the road, and there's a lot of cars, right? So again, it's important to know that this is a city where people should be front and center always. Anyways, I know the chair is waving at me, just wrapping up, but I think I got my point across. So thank you, staff, and thank you for this update, and I will wholeheartedly support it.
We have to finish this agenda. Counselor Chernis Lynn?
Yes, thank you. I have an amendment on, it's a technical amendment related to the much-needed IPS signal at Bayview and Sutherland, which many people use to cross Mount Pleasant Cemetery. It's just that city council prohibit pedestrian crossings on Bayview Avenue between the north curb line of Sutherland Drive and a .30, .5 meters south of the south curb line of Sutherland Drive. And it's just so that there will only be sort of one crossing, as opposed to on the north and south side of Sutherland, and that's really because there's a TTC bus, and we're worried that we would have potentially accidents with people, so we don't want to use Vision Zero to actually create Vision Zero problems. So this is just a technical amendment. But I just want to also add, I think we have to think really carefully, we're either doing Vision Zero or we're not. And the ASE cameras are really important in training people to not speed excessively. It's, and that is a really important piece in lowering the severity of, if someone is hit by a car, of the, of the damage to them and the less likelihood that they die. That is a really significant piece, and so I hope that people will have very sober thoughts when they vote on, on these motions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for keeping it short. Counselor Holliday, how about you?
Thanks.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Speaker. If I could ask the clerk to put the two motions on there, and I'll talk about them in a second. Speaker, I actually didn't come prepared to talk about ASE tonight to the level that we have, but it's erupted because I think there's a bit of a pent-up unfinished business or requirement to have a conversation about it. I would submit to council that we're at an interesting time in the city where people are really starting to feel the effects of ASE, and I think the tides are shifting a little bit. You know, this was a program that was, I would say, generally embraced by citizens, and I think we're approaching a point where it, some people are saying it's feeling a bit Big Brother-ish. And I want to make sure that we think about that as a council, and the reason why I say that, there's a really, really important report on the Government Management Committee that just passed, and that is on our administrative penalty services system. And what it tells us is that there is an enormous pent-up demand for processing of appeals of red light and potentially ASE camera tickets. They are getting to the point that I wonder how we're ever going to be able to process them in a timely manner. So to have effective enforcement, you need to have two things, you have to be in fear of getting caught, and there has to be fear of consequences. And if we end up in a situation where we have so many tickets- And if we end up in a situation where we have so many tickets that we actually can't process them, and they get thrown out, then what are we doing? Do we have an effective system? So I have two thoughts, and I'll commend the mayor for her, for what she brought forward with making ASE points more visible. My suggestion is really simple in my motion. It's, it's just a request to have the general manager consider painting the ASE cameras a different color. I said paint, it could be a vinyl wrap. I would even settle if staff even just did it on a pilot basis, just to see if it brought the number of tickets issued down. I bet it would, because those gray boxes that are on the side of the road that are the cameras blend in, people don't notice them, and I think it would help.
Okay, thank you.
Speaker, I, I, may I speak about my second motion? It's important.
Yeah, okay.
And I'll, I'll be brief.
Just please try to be quick.
The reason I bring this up is, this is an idea, this motion, to look at possibly having the camera on for certain intervals. And think about it, when you drive past one of these, you have no idea if the camera's on, so it serves that effect. But if we ever wanted to get in a situation where we actually reduce the number of tickets that are issued, but still have the effect of really good enforcement, because you never know when you go by if that camera's on or off, I think this is a possibility, and that speaks to the situation I talked about at government management. I'm just suggesting a report to look at options on this for a future date.
Thank you. Counselor Cheng, are you going to keep it short? Oh. Counselor Carroll.
Amendment to Mayor Chow's motion that we've worked on together. I don't know if it's ready. They're, they're shaking their heads.
Come on. I, I really can't believe we're debating this. No, I know, I just, it's just, you know, I've been arguing with Barbara. Barbara, how many times do I argue with you that I want speed cameras? I'm getting requests from all my constituents, they want speed cameras, they want this and Vision Zero. They keep asking me, and they don't understand why we can't do it on every street. And, you know, so maybe in some wards, it's not needed, I don't know, but in my ward, for us to be debating this, and, you know, we have been supporting Vision Zero for years and, and putting the cameras, that is the best thing that we've ever done. And do I care about somebody driving in Counselor Perutza's ward at 2:00 in the morning? Well, I don't care. Like, you know, obviously, they're speeding, so, I mean, the argument is so silly on why you want to make changes because you're concerned about somebody driving at 2:00 in the morning. But, you know, let's move on, let's, let's approve the recommendations, and let's move on. We don't want to come back tomorrow, so please, please, let's get this over with. Short and sweet and great, okay. Counselor Burnside, Counselor Ainsley, thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Ms.
Ms. Deputy.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Speaker. I'm going to be short and sweet as well to the transportation staff. I want to thank you for all the work they've done on Vision Zero. You know, when it comes to automated speed enforcement cameras that we all seem to talk about or are talking about, you know, people in my ward, when they see them, they're like, "Oh, my goodness, automated speeding cam, camera." You know, speeding, I have speeding in almost every neighborhood in my ward. It's the topic first off the bat in every town hall meeting that I have in every area of my ward. Speed, the speed cameras go in, people aren't happy about them. When they leave, I get calls about why can't they have them back? You know, we talk about putting more markings on them to make them more highly visible. I don't want that. You know, if we have too many tickets being issued, maybe we need to hire more staff to, to process them. But I'm not prepared to go to, to some child's parents in my ward and say, you know, "I'm really sorry your child was hit. We decided to make the cameras more visible. We, you know, we made it easier for people to speed," not harder, which is the whole idea behind Vision Zero. You know, part of me, when it comes to the warning signs, I'd be happy if we didn't have any warning signs. You know, I think it would help keep people doing the speed limit if they had no idea at all where the ASE cameras were. So those are my quick thoughts to Barbara and her staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being quick.
Thank you.
Counselor Carroll, you are now next. Finally, you're up there, my friend. Here you go. Carol, Carol, Carol. There you go.
The, the motion is ready to put on the screen. If, if folks remember the mayor's motion, the mayor's motion actually makes some of the other suggestions people have had shrink wrap, put, put neon lights and arrows and maybe have a hovercraft over top of every camera so people see it coming. We don't really need them. The mayor's motion asks for a little bit more signage there, and you don't want to put too much signage, or what is the point? We're trying to change behaviors here. And so that part is great. However, to B, the, the issue of how we deal with someone getting three or four or five tickets before they've received in the mail the first one, that's a tricky one. We need to understand the regulatory change necessary from our staff, and so the mayor said, "Please move that friendly amendment." So in your very next council session, we're going to bring back staff's professional advice on that, how we would go about doing that. It will be good for people to hear that. This morning, going into round one, I heard the premier himself saying, "What are we going to do about this?" People are hearing about it once they've got a ticket. But when they save and accept the people who get a ticket, think about who phoned your office. Has anyone ever phoned your office, your constituency office, and said, "You've got to do something. All the cars in my neighborhood are driving by my house too slowly"? No. We take calls all day long saying, "The people are whizzing past my house too fast. Please do something about the speeding." Those are the only calls we get, other than the person who got a ticket. And that should tell us something. So this gets at the people who are being vexed by the repeat tickets. It's going to be complicated, and we may have to involve the province in some regulatory change. We may, may need to buy a software, because that's how this is done in the states currently, by having software that's evaluating how many tickets you got between the last one and the, the time you got one in the mail. So we'll fix that. But we've got to do it right, and we've got to avail ourselves of our own professional advice. So please adopt this, and the mayor's motion, and really, it's the most simple one, you don't need to adopt all the other gugos. Thank you.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you. Our next is Counselor Burnside. Up next, there you go, Counselor. Thank you.
Yeah, be ready for it. It won't save a lot of time, but I am definitely calling the question. My best speech tonight.
The question has been called, and here comes the speaker to take it on.
I'm sure at any time.
Absolutely. Question called. Yes, yes, yes. Recorded vote. Enough. We started this item with no one wanting to ask questions, nobody wanting to speak, and we spent over an hour. We have staff that have been sitting here all day, and... Maybe I've had too much chocolate today, I don't know.
Counselor Ainsley, Mayor Chow, please. The motion to end debate carries. The vote is 15 to 4.
The motion's on the screen. Motion by Counselor Carroll. On favor, carried. Next motion. Okay, next motion, Mayor Chow has amended, on favor, carried. Counselor Perutza's. Recorded, yeah.
Counselor Sacks, please.
Negative.
Negative, thank you. Motion two does not carry. The vote is 4 to 16.
Okay, next motion. By Counselor Matlow, on favor, opposed if any, carried. Counselor Churnus Lynn, on favor, opposed if any, carried. Is that it? Counselor Holiday, on favor, carried. Counselor Holiday, on favor, recorded.
Motion five does not carry. The vote is 9 to 11. 5B, sorry.
Okay, what's the next motion? Pardon? Item is amended, on favor, carried. Okay, thank God we finished that one. Before we, before we go to the next one, I, the city clerk has advised me that additional materials are now available for members' review in the Clerk's Meeting Portal. CC 31.4, 708 and 712 Kennedy Road, Ontario Land Tribunal hearing, request for directions. Counselor Candevale has advanced circulated motion with confidential attachment. CC 31.8, 4696 Young Street, Ontario Land Tribunal hearing, request for directions. Counselor Cheng has advanced circulated motion with a confidential attachment. Okay, so our next item is PH 22 point... Oh, quick releases, okay. Who has quick releases? Put their name on the screen. Counselor Candevale?
Ah, yes. I've got, I think clerks may have my motions ready for SC 23.1 and SC 23.2.
What's the item?
SC 23.1, a deferral motion.
No. It's not quick.
It's not ready?
It's not quick.
Sorry, it's a deferral motion. Is it ready or not? Hello?
SC 23.1, Counselor Candevale wants to refer it?
Defer.
To refer it? Okay, recorded vote. Okay, recorded vote.
I'm, okay. Asking colleagues to defer on this. I want to work with the applicant to, to get more arcing as part of this development project.
The motion to defer the item does not carry. The vote is 7 to 14.
Okay, and Counselor Thompson, you're moving the staff recommendation? Counselor Thompson's moving the staff recommendation, on favor, carried. Okay, so SC 23.2, Counselor Candevale, you want to do the same thing? Counselor Candevale.
Yeah, I'm moving, there are two items to move, staff rec and then the public art.
What?
Clerks have two motions, and one is to, if they can pull it up, to include and the applicant to work. Here are the staff recommendations I'm moving, and then there's an additional motion on public art.
Okay, so is he... Yeah? And move, yes. Okay. So on the staff recommendation, on favor, carried. And on the public art, recorded vote.
Uh, okay. I asked colleagues to vote on this, the applicant's supportive, and so is staff on this, on this amendment.
We have a recorded vote. We're in the middle of a vote.
Who's asking for the recorded vote?
Counselor Thompson.
Counselor Churnus Lynn and Counselor Pasternak, please. And Counselor Candevale, please. Motion B, 1B, does not carry. The vote is 10 to 11.
Okay, so Counselor Fletcher, you have a quick release?
Yes. I do. M 31.19, fixing roads faster. There's a quick amendment, and then I'll release it.
Which, which one?
MM? 31.19. And there it is, there.
Okay, MM, MM 31.19, okay.
And I've removed that and replaced it with additional repaving projects on local roads in poor conditions, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, on MM 31.19, Counselor Fletcher's moving an amendment, on favor, carried. Item is amended, on favor, carried.
Thank you.
All right. Counselor Bravil. Counselor Bravil?
Yeah. Thank you, Speaker. I'd like to quick release MM 31.26, open or closed, improving public information on pool closures and alerts. And just to say quickly that in the middle of a heat wave, residents in my ward went to Giovanni Caboto Pool, were not told that the pool was closed, lined up.
Was this on MM 31.26?
Yeah.
Okay. There's questions for that one.
Okay.
But you've also held down MM 31.21?
Yes, I held it down because the mayor wanted to be there.
Okay, so that's the mayor's. Okay, thank you. Counselor Cheng, quick release? Counselor Cheng?
Yes, yes, I do. It's NY 24.5, and I just want to move staff recommendations.
Okay, on NY 24.5, Counselor Cheng is releasing, on favor, carried. Thank you. Counselor Churnus Lynn?
Thank you. I want to move the...
Thank you, I want to move the recommendations in CC 31.5, but I just wanted to briefly comment fifteen seconds on this. There is a request for directions, which I'm supportive of, but I just want to note that with a lot of development, and in this particular case, we're losing an entire building of medical offices in my ward, and I do think, you know, this is part of what creates complete communities, and I just wanted to acknowledge that I'm really sad to see this go, and although I know that I don't have the power to stop it, I think we need to just take note of that and reflect on it, thank you.
Thank you, on the item, on favor, carried, thank you, that's it for the quick releases, we'll go to the next item, PH 22.5, Counselor Holliday, you held it down, the Housing Accelerator Fund, apartment infill study. No questions, does anybody have any questions? On PH 22.5, no questions? Okay, speakers, Counselor Holliday? Counselor Holliday?
Thank you, Speaker, very briefly, I will not support this for the following reasons: If you look into the report and then you look online on where the rack sites are, they are of limited spread across the city, particularly very few of them TEYCC area, but this report creates as-of-right conditions, where there could be infill townhouses or the removal of amenities, I don't think that that's a fair trade, I think that the people that would be affected by this type of development should have their say in the process, and the numbers are in the report, because there is such a limited number of applications, I think it's out of balance, so my answer's no. Recorded vote on it.
Are there any further speakers on this item? No, recorded vote.
Speaker, hello? Speaker, I want to make sure, can you hear me? Can you confirm if you can hear me? Speaker, can you confirm if you can hear me?
Yes. What is it, Counselor Crisanti?
No, no, I just want to make sure that you can hear me, okay, I wasn't sure if I was online, all right.
We can hear you.
All right.
Okay.
Counselor Perutsas and Counselor Cheng, please. The item carries, the vote is nineteen to one.
Item is PH 22.8, Housing Action Plan Avenue Policy Review, Counselor Holliday held it down, do we have any questions? Does anybody have any questions? Nobody? Okay, Counselor Holliday to speak. You want to put your name, okay, Counselor Holliday to speak. Okay, go ahead.
My motion is simple, I'd like to move Ward Two from the Stage Two work to the Stage Three, and the reason for that is that the completion of the Eglinton West extension is a long way off, and we still haven't even defined the transit areas, and so this is of particular interest to the community, there's a lot of concern over this, and I think an extra few months would make life easier.
Okay. Okay, on the motion by?
I would like a recorded vote on his motion.
Recorded vote.
Counselor Burnside and Counselor Perutsas, please. Motion one carries, the vote is ten to nine.
Okay, our next item is EY 23.1. Oh, item is amended, on favor, recorded vote, item is amended.
Counselor Burnside and Counselor Perutsas, please.
I want to apologize to staff that they were sitting here all day. Have a good evening.
Speaker, I'm lying and I haven't been asked for my vote.
Sorry, Counselor, your camera was off, I'll take your vote verbally now.
Affirmative.
Affirmative, thank you. The item is amended, carries, the vote is nineteen to two.
Okay, our next item is EY 23.1, 3406 and 3434 Western Road, Official Plan and Zoning by Law Amendment. Counselor Perutsas held the item down, Counselor Perutsas, do you have questions? Okay, questions? Do we have, do we have anybody here? Oh, okay, or did we send everybody home? Oh, here we are, okay. Go ahead.
So, just take us through this very quickly, this is a small site, 1.7 hectare site, right? Relatively small site, little plaza. Just a yes would be okay.
My apologies through the speaker, if you give me one moment, I can give you the correct size, thank you.
Well, 1.7, that's what it says in the report, I'm just asking you what's in the report, it's, I can, you've already said yes, yeah, okay.
Through the speaker, yes.
Okay, good, small site. So, there was an application on this site fairly recently, in 2015, which rezoned this site, which is located in the Emery Village Secondary Plan, and the, for a, you know, for a 12-story apartment building, 270 units, correct, in 2015?
Through the speaker, yes, that is correct.
And they were supposed to pay a $400,000, you know, Section 37 thing, monies, but we never got that money because it was never built, right?
Through the speaker, yes, that's correct.
So, a site that has a zoning that could be, you know, that if you come in with a site plan and a building permit tomorrow, you could build 270 units, a small site, with a density level of 3.46, oh, remind me, this is in the Emery Village Secondary Plan, what's the maximum density level in the Emery Village Secondary Plan?
Through the speaker, the density under the Emery Village Secondary Plan is 2.5 FSI.
2.3?
2.5.
Oh, 2.5, and this site is already zoned for 3.46, considerably above what the secondary plan permits, correct?
Through the speaker, that's correct.
Okay, but they never built the building?
Through the speaker, that's correct.
So, they bought the site, they come in with a new application, and from 270 units, the new application goes to 832 units with an FSI of 9.69, correct?
Through the speaker, yes, that's correct.
Okay. And why would that be the case?
Yes, through the speaker, to you, Counselor, so I can't anticipate what the goals of the developer are, except for what they bring before me, so I can only go by the applications that I have and also the history of the site.
So, really, so a site went through an application process, 270 units, they could build 270 units, they say no to the 270, they buy it and, I don't know, pick it up a couple of years ago, come back in with another application, boom, 832 units, 9.69. What, the Chair of the Planning Committee usually likes to say that it's a way of, like, people printing money, just upping density on land, right, kind of like increasing the value of land, is that what's happening here?
So, through the speaker, so it's important to look at the context of what's going on within the Emery Village Secondary Plan.
Oh, so let me ask you another question, just generally, describe the Emery Village Secondary Plan, it's basically an intersection of Weston and Finch, correct, bounded by rail line in an industrial area to the north, right, heavy industry area to the north?
So, through the speaker, the Emery Village Secondary Plan is a very diverse location, we have employment lands to the north, we have TRCA lands and Lindelieu Park to the west, we have a variety of community-serving facilities, we also have 11 existing and approved towers.
Let me ask you the question this way, would it be fair to describe that intersection this way, that it's an intersection bounded on the south side by the Hydro Corridor? A Hydro Corridor, right? Bound it on, just on the east side by a CN rail line, just to the west by heavy industry, you know, big heavy industry, concrete trucks, that kind of industry, right, where, you know, like, chuk, chuk, oh, and in a city works yard, you know, where, you know, where we used to store garbage, right? And on the south side, right, a ravine valley, a ravine valley, that, yeah, you could describe as TRCA lands, but really it's just kind of like a ravine valley that leads into the lumber, would that be like a fair characterization or a description of that intersection?
So, through the speaker, I would like to kind of complete the picture of the Emery Village Secondary Plan, we have a vibrant community, we have new developments with parks, we have new private daycares, we have community space located within the base buildings of buildings, and it's important to note that we have existing towers and a lot of people coming into the community in line with provincial directives on where we should place growth in relation to the council-approved PMTSA, and also the location of future Emery Station, so significant public infrastructure transit coming to this area, and also a significant amount of growth, but also services coming with that.
Thank you. Counselor Perks?
Yes, planning staff, you recommended approval of this application?
Through the speaker, yes, we did.
And you found it conforms to the provincial policy statements, the Planning Act, the official plan?
Through the speaker, yes, we did do a complete review, we looked at provincial policies, city policies, we also looked at the Emery Village Secondary Plan itself, and when you look at the proposal, you can see many of the key aspects and goals of the plan reflected in that.
So, in your professional opinion, this application is good planning?
Through the speaker, yes, this application is good planning.
Thank you.
Counselor Perutsas to speak.
Speaker, so I have a motion, and the motion is basically to deny the application, and it's self-explanatory, and I'll tell you why I believe we got it absolutely 100% wrong on this one. This is an area that has a secondary plan, granted the secondary plan was developed some years ago, but we had a recent application come in on this site for a rezoning, and it was rezoned to a substantial development at 270 units, at 3.46 FSI, well above what the secondary plan suggests is, you know, is good for this area, and all of that, I get it, and people, correct, they can come in and they say, look, I, no, I don't want that, I want to go higher, okay, and we can look at that and say, sure, you know, how high do you want to go? The problem with all of this is that what it does, it, all of a sudden, we start planning a neighborhood or a community outside of any guide, you look at an application and you say, yeah, sure, there are amenities within this area, yeah, there's Abbotan Arena, you know, 10 minutes walk from this intersection, it's an arena that operates in the wintertime with a room in the summertime, all right? There's no real amenities here, and there's no real amenities that suggest that, you know, it forms a complete community. In fact, there's a supplementary report that the staff has provided, and I want to thank them for that, because they've looked at it and, you know, judging by their numbers, they're saying that if, on the balance of this intersection, when all of the sites play out, and if they play out at this density level that we are allowing today, the 9-point, whatever, 9.6 here, that in this, on this intersection, you are ultimately going to be locating 24,547 people, 25,000 people, over the next little while, right? So, my, you know, like, sort of, mined by my reserve, I've represented Jane and Finch for a long, long time, and, you know, planners there, and this is not a criticism of you folks, but, you know, all of those developments that, they won awards in the 1960s and 70s, Driftwood, Driftwood Court, Shoreham, Shoreham Court, Fir Grove, which we had to take down, absolute planning disaster, you guys, years later, look back in the rearview mirror and you said, man, oh, man, what did we do? They won awards for that? Right, and we've spent decades and decades and decades, and millions and millions upon millions of public sector dollars, trying to mitigate, correct, and try to balance the mess that mostly, sorry, but planners in the 1960s and 70s did, but I got it, we're different today, today we're absolutely bank on, spotless, correct, and when we say today, this is good planning, that 30 years from now, we're going to look back in the rearview mirror and say, man, oh, man, they should have got an award. Where's that medal, good job, what he likes to say is pat yourself on the back, good job, right? Well, I don't believe that. I don't believe that it's a good job, and I believe that in this one here, a sober second look is required, and what I'm asking all of you is, take a sober second look, say no. There's no downside to it, zero, this is land being purchased with a very, very significant zoning on it, and it's just increasing the value of the land, making housing ultimately less affordable for everybody, whether it's rental condo or anything else, because if you keep upping it, the value keeps upping it, and it becomes less and less out of reach for people, you got nothing to lose, make it right.
Thank you.
Do the right thing.
Counselor Perks to speak.
Thank you, Speaker, I'd like to begin by moving the staff recommendations. There you have it, this was sent to Etobicoke York Community Council, they debated it, there was a lot of back and forth, and they sent it to us without recommendations. You heard the staff rationale, it's there for you to read, I would just say, we don't get to be the sober second thought, the second thought is actually the Ontario Land Tribunal, and I have doubts about their sobriety, I certainly don't think that you want to hand this decision over to them, possibly with a de novo hearing, and get something far worse, we all know how that goes, so please do support the staff recommendations, it's good planning, and it's much better than handing the decision over to someone else where we could get a much worse decision. where we could get a much worse decision.
Okay, can we ring the bells? We're going to vote. Put the motions on the screen. Ring the bells? Yeah, we're going to have a recorded vote.
Counselor Crisanti, we have your vote verbally, please.
Yeah, I'm here, I'm here, sorry. Yeah, affirmative.
Affirmative, and Deputy Mayor Malik. Sorry, Deputy Mayor, I spoke over you. Your vote, please.
Sorry?
I, I spoke over you and didn't hear your vote.
Yes, in favor.
Thank you.
Affirmative.
Counselor Carroll.
Negative.
And the negative, thank you. Motion one does not carry, the vote is seven to 14.
Okay, on Counselor Perk's, his motion, on favor, recorded.
In favor?
In favor, thank you. And Counselor Crisanti, please.
Negative.
And the negative. Motion two carries, the vote is 17 to four.
Okay, our next item is E, our next item is EY 2328, 4208 Dundas Street Liquor License. Counselor Perk, you held the item down. Do you have questions?
No, I don't.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay, Counselor Perk, did you want to speak on it?
No.
Would you, do you want to release it? Why did you hold it?
No, I just have, you know, I, I think it's important that we look at anything that goes on in Ward Two carefully.
Okay, on, on the item, on the item, on favor, carry. All right, the next one is NY, oh, before I do that, I was told by staff that CC 31.7717 Nipigon Avenue, Ontario Land Tribunal hearing, request for directions, Counselor Cheng has advanced circulated a motion with a confidential attachment. So on, release TE 2323, Yusuf Nathan Phillips Square, please, thank you. TE 23.23, I'd just like to release that, so staff can leave and we're not going to get caught in a long planning debate. Can we put it on the screen? Just releasing there. That's fine. Okay, so everybody knows, TE 2323 Yusuf Nathan Phillips Square, Counselor Fletcher's releasing, on favor, carry. All right. So our next one is NY 24.2, 1350 Shepherd Avenue West, owning amendment application, Counselor Pasternak. Yeah, do you have any questions to staff?
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak on it and then move the staff recommendations. I'm going to start off by thanking a number of people who worked for years on this file. James Cox from Canada Lands, David Onsalme, David Sit, oh, I'm sorry.
What are you moving?
You are, you are correct. So the first, motion A is a series of technical amendments drafted by staff, which amend some of the items in the staff report that's been posted for some time. Motion B are, are two motions that were supporting the community in their vision for these, this parcel to be a seniors' village, a seniors' community. The first one is encouraging the landowner, Canada Lands, when they do their request for proposal, they put their parcel out to market, they look for developers that might have a proven track record in building seniors' communities. And then in second part is the owner to work with the Downsview community for ideas and advancing content in any future request for proposal. The landowner has seen those motions and doesn't seem to have any problems with them. So I will continue with my thank yous. I mentioned David Onsalme and James Cox from Canada Lands, David Sit from Community Planning, Shelley Cham from North York Community Planning, Perry Cora Yennis, Community Planning, Josie, Josie Cascado, Community Activist from Downsview Lands Community Voice, the Arbo, Seniors Health Village, Elizabeth Jossam Group, and of course, the York Centre Senior Steering Committee. This, this development application before us is the starting gate of the Downsview Secondary Plan. This is a parcel of land that at the end of the day, we'll see about 115,000 residents, 52,000 workers, and 63,000 units. Approximately 24,000 of those units will be affordable. In this application before us, about up to 1,700 units, 20% affordable, close to $7 million in Section 37 for a community center across the street, new parks, pops, a pedestrian crossing, and of course, protections for the historical woodlot. So I would, as far as the seniors' village is concerned, the community's been working for several years with Canada Lands to make sure that it's a seniors-friendly village, that seniors are welcome there. The ingredients are all in this proposal, affordability, accessible walkways, pedestrian crossing, and of course, access to high-level transit, including the subway station and the go station, and of course, surface routes along Shepherd and Keel, about 30,000 square feet of parkland. But you know, one of the jewels in this community will be a $100 million community center across the street. One of the goals we have to work with, with Parks, Forestry, Recreation, is making sure that there's advanced seniors' programming in there. There's also 656, 465 square meters of community agency space where we can do seniors' programming on-site. This has, this has been a journey where we've had numerous town halls, community consultations, working groups, where people have met at my office on numerous occasions over the years. We've worked with Canada Lands, Community Planning, to come up what, what we feel is a strong application, to make sure this is a livable, safe community, that this has all the amenities to, to have it flourish, whether it's the parklands or the community center. And of course, we are quite fortunate to have high-level transit within walking distance. So, you know, some, some applications have their weaknesses, some applications are stronger than others. I would continue to watch this through the monitoring group and the various motions moved at Community Council to ensure that the vision that the community has for these lands comes to fruition, and the work is just beginning. But this is the first step in a long journey in Downsview, and I hope that this sets the standard, the gold standard, of what we want to see as a livable, safe community with affordable housing, and certainly a village for seniors. So I thank once again all the staff and all the community members, the residents of Downsview have been most active with this, and they deserve a great deal of thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So on the motions by Counselor Pasternak, on favor, opposed if any, carried. On one B, on favor, opposed if any, carried. Item is amended, on favor, carry. Thank you. So if members, if we can go, because we have city staff here, MM 3121, for addressing gaps in the city's heat relief strategy by Mayor Chow, if we can deal with that one now. So do we have any questions? Are the staff ready?
Thank you. Could staff describe what support Red Cross volunteers means in recommendation number six? It says the city would support Red Cross volunteers.
Do we have anybody answering?
To the speaker, the existing relationship with the Canadian Red Cross is, exists with the Toronto Emergency Management. I think the motion refers to wellness checks, which is not actually part of our agreement. The agreement that we do currently have has been used in the past to leverage other relationships with other divisions, so that's something that can be taken back, as Toronto Emergency Management would be able to assist.
But we're directing the deputy city manager to create a pilot that would support Red, does anyone know what that means?
So our, through the speaker, our understanding is that we would be looking at what role they could play in supporting vulnerable residents.
Who's they?
So, the Red Cross volunteers. So from looking at this recommendation around working with Canadian Red Cross to develop a pilot program, so our understanding of this request is this is for us to go back and look at what that pilot program would look like to develop it, with the intent of going door-to-door with vulnerable populations. That's the work for us to do, to develop what that pilot would look like.
So, I understand the Red Cross could go door-to-door to do wellness checks, but what's our role in that? Other than having a conversation? This is support.
I think it, it could be having a conversation. I think, you know, when you look at what other volunteer programs have done in other jurisdictions, where it's a neighbor check, or perhaps providing information, but again, that, that is for us, I think, to determine and come back to. How would they support what we already have in the heat relief network? Where are their opportunities?
This is, this is the city supporting Red Cross? Okay, all right, it, it's not clear. There's something in here about distributing 500,000 bottles of water. Are, are we gonna, is the city now going to be distributing bottles of water? Or paying to do that?
To the speaker, so this recommendation, our interpretation of that is that it's allocating and ensuring that frontline agencies can distribute. So we do do some distribution of bottles of water that we can talk a little bit more about if that's of interest, but this would be how we can work with agencies to ensure that.
This means send money? Yes, okay. There's one in here about sending water trucks. We send water trucks to high-priority locations?
So we currently do have water trucks. So we did, for example, over the weekend, we had three water trucks that were at various locations in the city so that residents could go and fill up their water bottles during the heat streaming.
This is H2O to go.
That's right.
So those are water trailers, not trucks.
Go ahead.
We're not sending a truck of water.
Through the speaker, no, we rented additional water trailers so people can fill up containers.
The tops.
With the tops on the side.
The tops, right?
Yes. Counsel approved.
Tanker trucks of water.
Yes, they are smaller version of the city's trailers, but they were rented, and then council approved that in March, that program.
And what is a chief heat officer? Does anybody know?
So a chief heat officer, you know, in this, if directed by council, considering creation of a chief heat officer, part of what we would look at is the Environment, Climate and Forestry Group is coming back with a report, looking at governance and how we can have that sort of support and oversight, and we would be looking at what a chief heat officer could do in terms of that as well. Again, this is, I think, a request for us to consider creation of that, and what that might look like, and what that role might be that we would come back on.
So it gets hot, all of a sudden, we spool up, and all the other things we need to worry about as city, now we're going to take on a chief heat officer?
I think that this is our consideration of a creation of that, and what we would have to do, Counselor, is look at what that role is in terms of complementary to the other services that we have in place for our heat relief strategy.
Thank you. I keep going?
No. You went over time, I didn't even notice. Okay, do we have any other questions? Counselor Burnside.
Thank you, through you to staff. This idea of a chief heat officer, was that an idea that came from staff?
This specific, you know, this has come forward as a, as a recommendation to staff for us to come back on that.
Do you think it's necessary?
I think that there is potential value, but we have to look at that. So I think that this is, this isn't something that we currently have, so, but I think that it's, it's reasonable for us to look at that and what that role might be. I don't think, I can't say today if it's necessary or not. We haven't looked at that.
Well, we've had heat waves in the past, and I think staff have handled it. This year's maybe not so much, but in the past, seemed to, we seemed to know what we were doing. I'm trying to understand why, what's changed that we now are considering or want to consider this role? It's kind of confusing to me.
So to the speaker, maybe I can help answer at least the consideration. So we are looking at kind of the long-term impacts of climate change and the, the governance related to resilience. We're expecting a fairly significant increase over time related to the number of days of extreme heat. It was around, averaging around 10, kind of, in, at, up to the year 2000, and we're now looking at kind of 40 to 70 later into the century, so really looking at that governance role. And we've seen chief heat officers being established in other jurisdictions where they're seeing more extreme heat and, and more kind of days together of extreme heat.
Okay, so 40 to 70 days at the end of the century in 75 years, or 10 years from now?
So it's, it happens over time, so we do have our projections that, you know, by the mid-century, so kind of 10, 15 years, we're looking at 26 to 44 days, and then by the 80s, I think 46 to 76 days.
So this is one of those situations where the city's actually proactive?
That is what we're working towards, is a proactive risk assessment and proactive governance for climate resilience.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I have a question as well, it's counsel representing here.
Okay. Yes, but I have others on the list.
Okay, if you could add me, please.
Counselor Carroll, questions?
Thanks, Counselor Speaker. Just a quick question, because the motion, the first, the first clause is asking for a report, but then the others are immediate actions for this summer. And this is motion 21, so it's not on the cost sheet that, that we have under routine matters at the top. Has the financial impact been... Has the financial impact been discussed with the CFO and financial planner?
Well, ask the CFO to respond.
Has the financial impact been discussed? There's a, because there's a report back, but then there are immediate action ones. Have we unpacked the financial impact? Because this is a newer motion, so it's not on the cost sheet?
To the speaker, so the team did attempt at a quick review of this, essentially the financial impact statement notes that any financial impacts would have to come forward as part of the report back, and the work that would be coming in the future.
Oh, so, because the report back is at the end of the year, but there are some actions that are, that seem to be asking you to take action this summer, like Camp TO stuff is gonna happen relatively quickly if we have a, we have a 45-degree day during Camp TO, I think it wants you to act this summer.
To the speaker, we have not had an opportunity to identify the immediate impacts. What is noted in the, in the financial impact section is that we would come forward and identify both any actions that would have been undertaken, but also any of the requests that may come forward in future reports.
Okay.
I think in terms of the Camp TO, we can speak to what we do have planned already, in terms of those contingency planning.
Well, where it was going, I don't need a big unpacking of it, where it was going was this. Because, because 45 degrees was pretty dire. I felt at risk the minute I poked my nose out the door, and so we've got to worry about small children and the elderly. The point I was gonna make is this, I think following the ice storm in 2013 and other disasters, we actually have in our plan, we have an Office of Emergency Management, and while there may be costs attached here, we're talking about dire, serious heat threat, and we do have some financial contingency. Whether we had this motion or not, it would be, I would think, the intention of staff to help you facilitate this response, whether we had given you this lovely motion or not. Am I right about that?
You are correct.
Thank you. That's my only question.
Thank you. Councillor Ainslie.
Thank you, through you, madam speaker. I'm not sure who this gets addressed to, but I'm just wondering, so the cooling center system that we use now, and it's a lot of community centers, libraries, rec centers, could part of the utilization, underutilization of those cooling centers be the fact that they don't offer specific supports for people, homeless people?
To the speaker, the, the Heat Relief Network has been one of the parts of the heat strategy that's been supported by Toronto Public Health, and it's a way of identifying places that people can come to cool off, but each, each site has their own things that they contribute to, to people there, so the Heat Relief Network doesn't require them to have specific activities for, for people who are there.
But could that be, could that be leading to their underutilization? For example, like I'm on the Toronto Public Library Board, our library, we have 100 branches across the city, they're considered cooling centers, but we, we're not given any additional funding to be, for them to be used as cooling centers. We don't offer any additional programs, it's just people come in, sit there, read a book, read a paper, sit in a chair, because it's air-conditioned, so people that are homeless per se, we're not giving them anything additional. Would that not lead to their underutilization?
To the chair, the, the point of the Heat Relief Network is to have sites like the libraries, they're in all the communities, so people who are across the city can have access to cool spaces. And you just described the advantages, that there are things for people to do when, when they go to these sites of the, of the network, and so that's one of the reasons that we're slowly building, and have over time, built the, the sites and, and added to them, so that people can have them throughout the city.
Okay, but we're also looking at back, going back to 24/7 model, because once again, I'll use libraries as, as an example, they have set hours, a lot of our, a lot of our smaller branches close at 6 o'clock. So in the middle of a heat wave, where this week it was 46 degrees on a, on a Wednesday at 6 o'clock, people that are using them as a cooling center have to leave because they're closing.
To the chair, the, the way that the network is built out is that there are a number of places throughout the communities that have varied hours, some, as you just described, will close at times, and, but others will be available for people to come. The, the previous cooling centers we had before the pandemic, they were only opened during the heat warnings, they had hours, and there was a very small number of them. This, moving to the Heat Relief Network, we have over 500 locations, some of them have varied hours, as you just described, but this gives the community access to cooling places closer to where they are, which we have, during our evaluation, showed that this was a very valued part of the network. It was available close to people were.
Okay, and are there, will there be any supports available? For example, once again, I'm in, Morningside Library closes at 6 o'clock on a Wednesday, I'm told to go somewhere else. Will they be provided with bus tickets, or how are they getting from point A to point B, to another center that's open longer?
We, we do have information on the website to allow individuals to identify where there might be a nearby site that's part of the network, but I don't think that, that we're providing any support for transportation between the sites.
Okay, so we're gonna expect somebody from, to leave one cooling center, to go to another cooling center by their own means?
And the whole, the point of the network is that it has quite a few places, so we're hoping that in the community, that they will not be that far apart, so that you can go from a site that, as you said, has restricted hours during the day, to a place that's open later in the evening.
Okay, I'm not really buying into that, because I'm gonna use the Clark Center for the Arts, for example, which right now is considered a cooling center. It's not within a walk, it's not within walking distance of another cooling center. The only way to get to another one after the Clark Center closes at 6 o'clock, if you're homeless, you gotta take a bus.
Speaker, if I could just, the, the Heat Relief Network is a more universal program. We also have some specific pieces in place when it comes to homelessness, including the addition of an additional emergency set of shelter beds, and I think, Gord, it's about 100 shelter beds were activated in this heat alert. So for those who are homeless, there are also specific services that kick in, so that, because there aren't right now 24/7 cooling centers in place, so from a homeless perspective, those, that outreach would lead to perhaps having somebody come inside, if they were really in need of some cooling area, it would be coming into a shelter, which would also have then, to your point, all of these additional services that would support them.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, madam speaker.
Oh, way over time. See what happens? Councillor Myers.
Thank you, speaker.
Site was talking to me.
I'm just wondering if I can just get a better explanation of what exactly a chief heat officer would do? Is that a medical officer? Is that more of a?
Well, you know what, we can hear you.
You can't hear me?
We can hear you.
So to the speaker, I don't think we've determined what a chief heat officer might look like in the city of Toronto. There are existing chief, chief heat officer models, primarily in the United States, so we'd look at those. We're also looking at overall governance and the city's structure of administration in terms of looking at a chief, chief heat officer, but I'd say in general, what we see is, they have a role both looking at the long term, but also helping to coordinate amongst parts of cities that are responding to heat events. So it has kind of a dual role in terms of both planning, but also supporting on action.
And where would that department be located? Within what, what should the existing city structures?
So as I mentioned earlier, we're reporting back at the end of the year on governance for climate resilience, so we provide advice at that time on what that might look like. I can't answer that now, as that works underway.
Okay, thank you. And then with the third recommendation, is it really a good idea to be distributing at least 500,000 bottles of water, considering that's kind of counterintuitive to, you know, all the other environmental initiatives that we're trying to undertake as a city?
I, to the speaker, I'd say in, in general, yes, distributing 500,000 bottles of water would be counterintuitive, but of course, in an emergency situation, that type of, of access to, to water and the way that it comes, and the ability to distribute it, I think supersedes kind of our longer-term environmental goals. We always look for ways, for example, through the HTO, H2O to-go trucks, to provide other forms of access to water, but this is one of the easiest and most straightforward ways to distribute, so in an emergency, we, we consider that in addition to environmental goals.
So wouldn't that be as a very last resort, rather than going right to 500,000 bottles of, distributing water, that we find other, more environmentally responsible ways to get people the water relief that they need?
So to the speaker, I think we'll continue to look at other ways, but I think we've determined, and of course, in engagement with our, our colleagues in emergency management, that as it stands now, that is kind of one of the most effective ways to distribute relief and water to folks. So again, something we can continue to look at, on how we could do that differently from a circular or, or environmental perspective, but at the moment, especially during an, an event, this is an effective way to provide relief.
Thank you.
Thank you, speaker. So, first question, do we have a heat relief strategy currently?
To the speaker, yes, we do have a heat relief strategy. Toronto Emergency Management coordinates the, the heat relief strategy on an annual basis. We continue to work with all of our divisions, agencies, corporations and partner agencies in putting together this strategy. After each season, it's reviewed and revised based on best practices and lessons learned from the heat season previously. The heat relief strategy also indicates some of the measures that are taken between May and September during the heat season, and again, it's reviewed annually.
Well, you just answered my, my second question, so we review the strategy on a regular basis, and do we also have a hot weather plan for childcare centers and park staff as well?
Speaker, good evening. We have a heat response program for all of our staff here at the city, including park staff and childcare workers, but I can't speak to childcare personally, I'll hand it over to DCM.
I believe that we do. I do not have the specifics on that, however.
Yeah, no problem, but we have a plan for childcare, and we have a hot weather strategy for Torontonians, regardless of what age they are, and, and also we have a heat weather, a heat relief strategy for landlords, I believe. Can someone verify that? Hello? Can you hear me? Speaker? Put my time on hold, if you could, please.
Well, just waiting for Carlton to come down.
Ah, okay, all right. Maybe I could go to the next question?
No, no, I'm here, I'm here, thank you.
He's here, he's here.
Oh, hi Carlton.
Hi. Councillor Crisanti, thanks for the question.
Yeah.
As part of our RentSafe Toronto program, which is 3,500 apartment buildings that are rental apartment buildings, they do have a, there's a requirement for them, if they do not have air conditioning, to advise their tenants, either if there's air conditioning in a lounge, or, or something in the building, or the closest public facility that is air-conditioned. That's the requirement in the RentSafe TO program.
All right, thank you, that's helpful. Thank you, Carlton. Now, so it's part of the, the motion asking for a heat, a chief heat officer, let me first ask you, what are the current bodies that are responsible for putting together a heat strategy, and why cannot, and why could these people, bodies, people that we already have, staff that might know what they do, not be able to deal with extreme heat events that we have?
Speaker, I'll answer that, councillor. That very may well be what comes back after the review. So just to be clear, there is not an implementation plan that would be approved tonight for a chief heat officer. We're being asked to go and look as a potential, if that's helpful, but it could very well be that when we review the organization, and we review how we deal with heat emergencies today, that there is an alternative to ensure that we continue to collaborate well as a city to respond to heat events.
Last question. Do you feel that we may also need a chief cold officer, when we have extreme cold events, which we do quite frequently, more often than we do heat events?
Speaker, I, I think we have a robust response in cold alerts, and we have a, you know, much of this planning happens through Toronto Emergency Management, and we coordinate it through all of our divisions, so I think on both fronts, we're here to look tonight, if this is passed by council, at ways that we can improve, and we'll come back with suggestions around that.
Thank you, speaker. Those are my questions. Speaker, back to you.
Yes, thank you. You're done, okay. Gosh, just can't stand the videos here, the, count, oh. Mayor Chow to speak.
Thank you. In 2019, the city of Toronto issued a, a report called Resiliency Report.
Do you have a motion?
Ah, yes, there are, well, there's, the motion is in front of you, but I also have some amendments.
Okay, if you can just move the amendment, there it is, yeah.
In front of you?
It's on the screen.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. The report is called Resiliency Toronto. It predicted that in 2000, it's 20 hot days, by 2040, it's 66 hot days, there will be extended heat waves from 0.6 to 2.5 per year, in terms of heat waves, and maximum rainfalls from 66 to 166 millimeter, and the temperature is gonna rise, and of course, there'll be a lot more snow. We know that we have a climate crisis. We know from, whether it's intact insurance, whether it's scientists, that there will be severe climate events. Hotter days, more rainfalls, flooding, dramatic events, snow faster, more severe. So, we were hit last year with a big snowstorm, two in a row, and recently, a heat wave, just a few days ago. The city of Toronto worked hard, leading to this weekend, they made 440, sorry, 545 cooling cent space were open, distributed 14,000 water bottles, and opened 100 additional shelter spaces. We've also pushed for more water trailers, and I met with Red Cross, and they said they would have volunteers to canvass door to door to some of the at-risk neighborhood, to do wellness checks through their network. And Red Cross, of course, as you know, are very, very experienced. So those are things that we've done. I want to remind members of council that in the last budget, in 2025 budget, we added $2 million to open pools, splash, splash pads, and water structures a lot sooner, quite a few weeks sooner. And was it soon enough? We don't know. We tried to get it in end of May and in June. The, all the pools were not supposed to open until end of June. We saw the heat wave coming, so instead of just opening eight, we opened all the pools, and that was because of the 2025 extra investment that we were able to do that. Yes, in the middle of the heat days on Sunday. Yes, in the middle of the heat days on Sunday, some of the pools were closed for a few hours. And that was a problem. We did not hire enough lifeguards, maybe there was not enough, fast enough, there was a gap, and we need to fix it. That was on Sunday. On Monday and Tuesday, there were enough lifeguards, and the pools did not close because of the lack, with the lifeguards needing to take a break. So we can do a lot more, which is why the motions in front of you talked about that we need to consider doing more. Some of you have asked a question of the heat officer. That came directly from Acorn, I think Counselor Matlow will remember that. Acorn, which is an organization representing a lot of tenants, said that we need to have a heat officer. And I thought it was important to not just consider heat. In 2019, the City of Toronto had a chief resiliency officer. After a big report called Resilience Toronto with predictions of the climate crisis that we are seeing, more heat days, more heat waves, et cetera, unfortunately, in August 19th of 2019, this chief resiliency officer were let go, was let go, and that, and the job was absorbed into somewhere. So all the recommendations in front of you basically is asking for consideration. We need operation help, we need coordination, let's look at us, ask all our frontline staff, how can we help if there are gaps? What can we do together to make sure that these gaps will not occur? Because we know there will be more heat waves, and we need to be better prepared. So all those recommendations in front of you aim towards that. So we have a good resilient Toronto dealing with the climate crisis and all the impact it has on us.
Thank you. Counselor Bravo to speak.
Thank you, Speaker. I have a motion, and this motion is to address some of what Counselor Ainsley was talking about, is to ask staff to continue to search for more 24/7 cool indoor spaces for vulnerable people, including those people who are unhoused, and that it happens during this heat warnings in this summer, if possible, particularly looking at community-based organizations and agencies that have excellent relationships with people who are vulnerable, unhoused people, and can move quickly in communities across the city if they have the inclination and the support, and also to review any city-owned facilities for this use, and that it be done on an emergency basis, with some caveats here, obviously, around the, around ensuring that we're consulting with Chief Financial Officer and Treasurer are weighing in on the operational funding piece. We heard so much about vulnerable people, and I was very pleased to hear that the mayor moved forward with a recommendation that came from tenants. Acorn is the largest organization that mobilizes and represents tenants, and think about all the people that live in my ward, who are living in rooming houses or in buildings without heat, senior, tenants are really at risk in this situation, and so I was really pleased to see the entire package. While the pool situation wasn't smooth at the beginning, there was foresight in making sure that they were opened early. And so I think these, all of these things together really demonstrate responsiveness. We know that people who are unhoused, who have coexisting health conditions, need help during this time. Cooling centers, the way that they were run previously, were expensive and not as successful as they could be. And so the move that the city has made in the last year and a half toward respite and 24-hour approaches, it's a better use of dollars. And this is really asking staff to continue to do what they've been doing, but to continue to look, find space in the budget, and partner with community-based organizations primarily, who can do this work really effectively for us in times of extreme need. Thank you, Speaker.
I want to, first of all, thank the mayor for, I think, a very thoughtful motion. I'm glad that the role of the officer is about resiliency rather than only exclusively about heat. The mayor is correct that we need to, while we fight, we also need to adapt to the changing climate, and we need to recognize that we are having more storms, we're having more severe weather, we're having extreme cold, we're having extreme heat, and we need to make sure that our residents are both protected, but also our infrastructure is both protected and more resilient to be able to withstand and survive this changing climate that we're going through. Now, this should have been set up years ago and sustained for many years. The fact that John Tory did not ensure that we were set up for success in future years is a failure, and there is some cleaning up to be done, and I'm glad to see this motion finally addressing something that should have been done many years ago and sustained. Now, I also believe that our staff should be delegated with the responsibility in the trust to do some of the work to ensure that we get ahead of things. We should be able to know that our staff, for example, will look ahead at the forecast and recognize that we may need to hire more lifeguards and have shorter shifts, rather than just either shut down the pool or, you know, send a nurse out to make sure that they haven't fainted. We need to know that the next general manager of Parks and Recreation will look proactively, do that work, and make sure that we are prepared for the inevitable consequences of extreme heat or extreme cold, no matter what time of the year we're in. Similarly, I'd like to see more proactive engagement with advocates for the homeless to make sure that we don't get into a situation where we're hearing from advocates telling us that there are too many people in our streets or in our parks who can't, who don't have a safe place to go, who aren't finding the heat relief network as good as it needs to be. There are some things that don't make sense to me, like a reliance, for example, in private places like malls. Malls are not often very hospitable places for our homeless. They often get kicked out of malls. Pools, for example, I don't know many homeless people who walk around with a swimsuit. We just got to get real about what we're asking them to use and do when they need support, when they need to be healthy and well. Where we have water trucks, for example, we need to make sure that there are cups for people. I don't know many homeless people who walk around with their own water bottles, and when they are provided a bottle or a cup, it shouldn't be from a security guard. It should be somebody there who won't be intimidating, or somebody who, somebody who's vulnerable might feel uncomfortable about engaging with, because they've had bad experiences in the past. We can do better, and the mayor's motion demonstrates that, along with Counselor Bravo's motion, I must add, demonstrate a recognition of those points, and, you know, I'm very hopeful that as we hire a new and get set up for success, that we won't be going through this again. But I reckon, but I think the motion that the mayor has put forward is a recognition that we can do better, and for that, I'm very grateful.
Thank you. Kayon, point of order, Counselor Holiday.
Thank you, Speaker. I would just like to vote on 1, 3, and 6, after they're amended, on a recorded vote.
You want to vote on 1, 3, and 6 separately?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, on 1, 3, 6, recorded vote.
I think they have to be amended.
Oh, I forgot, yes. Mayor Chow has a motion, yeah. There it is on the screen, motion one. On favor, carried. Next motion.
Can I have a, excuse me, Speaker. The clerk pointed out that the mayor is replacing item number three, so can I vote on the replacement of item number three separately? Thank you.
Okay, so the next motion. Okay, recorded vote on part one of the mayor's motion.
I'll take your vote verbally. In favor for both of you, and Counselor Crisanti, please. Thank you. Part one of motion one carries, the vote is 21 to 1.
Okay, the balance of motion one on favor, carried. Motion two by the mayor, I mean by Bravo, sorry, by Counselor Bravo, on favor. Recorded vote.
Yes, Counselor Fletcher, your vote, please. Favor, and Counselor Crisanti, please.
Affirmative.
Affirmative, thank you. Motion two carries, the vote is 21 to 1.
Okay, so next one is motion, recommendation one and six, recorded vote, as amended.
Affirmative. Counselor Fletcher? In favor, thank you, and Counselor Crisanti. Affirmative, thank you. So parts one and six, as amended, carry, the vote is 21 to 1.
Okay, balance of the item as amended, on favor, carried. Counselor Chang, are you, well, are you ready to release NY 24.4, 221, 237 Finch?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I have worked with this applicant for quite some time, and city staff have worked with me on a motion for deferral. We're just not able to bring it here, but we have support of the applicant, as well as planning staff, to move this deferral.
So Counselor Chang is moving deferral, on favor, carried. Okay, Counselor Candevale held on CC 31.4, 708, 712 Kennedy Road, Ontario Land Tribunal Hearing. So who wants to, who wants to take this?
I think if there are questions for staff.
Okay, Counselor, Counselor, Counselor Candevale, move your motion.
It's being advanced circulated. I don't know to what extent I can get into detail, but.
We don't need to hear the details, just move the motion.
All right, I'm moving the motion.
Like, we're all here in the council chambers, and it's 20 to 10. Okay, on the motion, on favor, pose if any carried. Item is amended, on favor, carried. Counselor Chang, CC 31.7, 7 and 17 Nipigon Avenue.
Yes, moving staff recommendations, along with my confidential attachment.
Okay, we'll put the motion on the screen. On favor, carried. Item is amended, on favor, carried. Okay, Counselor Chang, CC 31.8, 4696 Young Street.
Same, moving staff recs plus my confidential attachment.
Okay, on favor, okay, there's two motions on that. Okay, on motion one A, on favor, carried. And the second one, it's on the screen, on favor, carried. Item is amended, on favor, carried. Okay, we have the last item, right? MM 3126. It's the pools. Open or close, improving public information. Okay, are we, do we have any questions on it? Hold on. Okay, just give us one second. Okay, Counselor Burnside, you have questions, right? Okay, do we have staff here? Yeah, okay. Counselor Burnside, questions?
Okay, yeah, through you. Is, to staff, is access to the city pools part of the heat strategy?
Speaker, yes, both during regular hours as well as extended hour programs.
Okay, thank you. I believe Toronto Fire is here. Did you do anything in preparation of the impending heat wave, or is it business as usual?
Speaker, as we do with all extreme events that are forecasted and based on risk assessments, we analyze our staff, and we brought in additional staff to make sure we had enough to respond.
Oh, interesting. Okay, thanks. EMS, did you do anything in anticipation of the heat wave?
Speaker, similar to our friends at Toronto Fire, we upstaff in preparation for any major weather event.
Okay, thanks. Did anyone reach out to you from Parks, the deputy city manager's office, or the city manager's office for help in terms of business continuity and any contingency plans, so that they could keep the pools open as part of the heat strategy?
We were, Counselor, we were contacted by, by Parks and Rec on the Monday of.
Okay, thank you. So the pools were closed on the Sunday.
On the Sunday, right.
And then the day later.
That's correct.
They called.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, back to city staff. Whose responsibility was it to ensure business continuity and keeping those pools open on Sunday?
That would be myself, Counselor, Speaker.
Speaker, it's myself, Thomas Zees, I'm the interim general manager.
Why weren't they kept open?
So we had, we had a number of pools, councillor, that were temporarily closed because of the humidex reading and following the protocols that were in place through heat stress protocols that were established in 2024. The reason that they were closed, it was about 45 degrees with the humidex reading, and staff were using the appropriate tools and made decisions based upon those protocols that were in place in 2024.
Do you have a business continuity plan to ensure that didn't happen? They seem to have one in Atlanta, which is, has the same type of weather, day in and day out, starting in May all the way through to October. I can give you lots of other examples. Do you actually have a plan? And I guess the second part of that question is, if you called Monday, why didn't you call Saturday?
Speaker, the, we had to follow up with Ministry of Labor as well as with the organization Occupational Health Clinics for workers of Ontario to validate what our flexibilities were and ensuring that we continue to meet the protocols that were in place. They were not available on Sunday. And regrettably, as I said, when this policy came into effect in 2024, leadership did not have that assessment done to determine when that humidex would be over 545, how they would address it at the time.
So you couldn't have called on Friday? I mean, I believe everyone knew there was a heat wave coming.
Speaker, definitely we all knew that there was a heat wave coming. I was not personally aware of this protocol at that time.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Can I, can I just add? So there is work that should have and could have been done in terms of preparing, knowing that the temperatures, you know, the forecast. And so that is something that we have taken back in terms of the week leading up, when we see that that's happening. Operationally, what does that mean? Adjustments that we should be making that then were in place on Monday, but as we know that that, you know, was not in place for Sunday. So to be clear, that is the work that is underway to ensure moving forward.
Right, but I guess my question respectfully--
Yeah.
And we've heard that of other issues where these are learning opportunities. Are we not past that? Like, respectfully, we're talking about people's lives here in a very, you know, I don't want to overstate it, but by the same token, is it, do you feel it's appropriate enough to say, oh, sorry, we'll get it right next time? The question I have ultimately is why, and I'm talking right up the ladder, I'm not just talking at one employee here, I'm talking right up the ladder. This was a heat emergency, we knew it was coming, Toronto Fire knows what to do, EMS knows what to do, somehow, we didn't know what to do. And I'm trying to understand why, and are we just going to get an apology? Are we going to see this sort of stuff again?
So, so I would say, and I'll go back to the, to the division to comment, but it is a commitment or an action, an action that is already taken. It is beyond an apology in terms of the readiness for that. And I think what we're saying is that, that those things should have been in place, we are putting them in place, and a commitment to do better on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Councillor Fletcher.
Yeah, I'd just like to understand what the departmental protocol is then, because there is a departmental protocol for EMS, a departmental protocol for fire, and what's the departmental protocol that's in place then for recreation and not necessarily the Parks part?
So, Speaker, through you, the protocol that was utilized on Sunday was local decisions being made by the local supervisor around the temporary--
No, that's not my question, if you don't mind me interrupting you. It's got to do with the protocols when there's a heat wave coming, not the protocols once you're in the middle of it. I'm understanding the protocol from EMS, heat wave, they're figuring out how they're going to handle that. Fire, figuring out how they're going to handle that, that's their protocol in their division. And I'm asking, what is the protocol for recreation?
So, Speaker, through, through you to the councillor, we have enhanced those protocols as of Monday.
No, I meant, so there wasn't one, is that what you're going to tell me?
So there was a protocol, and it was followed around the pools at that time. What we've done is add enhancements to that in a proactive way.
Then what was it? What was your protocol when you know there's a heat wave coming? Maybe, what was the protocol, maybe, what was it?
So the protocol was simply the measurement at each facility to manage that temperature.
Speaker, if I could jump in, I think, to the councillor, the protocols were focused around how we staffed up to open more pools and open them for more hours. The gap that occurred was within that, how we would staff in the eventuality where we had to cycle back on the number of lifeguards that were available to monitor. And as you know, the ratios of who could access the pool are governed by that. So the protocol around a heat relief strategy was, how do we get more staff in so we can open more pools for more hours? That was accomplished. Then we hit the second protocol, which is protecting our staff safety. We did not have strong enough protocols in place when some of the pools, not all, but some of the pools had to address their staffing concerns because of the heat.
So are you telling me your protocol then was to increase the staff complement at the pools in order to be ready for such a heat wave? Because I wasn't hearing that.
Speaker, on that weekend, had it not been a heat event, we would not have as many pools open, and we would not have had them open for as long as they were.
So you made the decision to open more pools on what day?
Speaker, the, the schedule was enforced the way we had it, and we accelerated pool openings and extended hours accordingly in advance of the heat wave.
So that part was planned for, for the heat wave, but I'm hearing from the emergency services that part of their planning for the heat wave is to look at their staff complement, understanding that it's going to be a difficult time. So is that part of the protocol, or was that part of your protocol? Extra staff, knowing it's going to be that hot, people in reserve?
Speaker, we had extended hours in the pools in terms of resources that were made available on the Sunday specifically. We had a set complement for that day, and we enhanced that for the Monday.
Yes, you may have had extended hours, but there were hours when, or times when they were actually closed because the staff complement couldn't manage--
Speaker, that is correct.
So your staff complement for heat was to extend, and you had those staff, but understanding in the same way I'm hearing from emergency services that when you're expecting that kind of heat, you're actually looking at your staffing period for that heat period.
Speaker, that is correct. We should have had--
So there wasn't that in place?
We should have had more staff then.
I'm just trying to, was there a protocol in place? It's a pretty simple answer. There wasn't, or there was, understanding what the requirements are for that kind of heat. And I'm hearing that there wasn't.
Speaker, it was an incomplete strategy.
An incomplete strategy, thank you.
Councillor Moyes, questions?
Three, Madam Speaker. At the last budget, we looked at Parks and Rec's budget and FTE. Is there enough staffing, or was there enough budget allocated to the department? And also, too, there was a decision to extend pool hours earlier in the year. So based on the budget we passed last year and the request to have more hours, do those two things align? And is that, was that part of the issue?
Speaker, we are, we are funded for the service level we are delivering currently. That includes the extended and heat events. The issue that came up Sunday was not a financial issue, if that's what you're--
Well, not financial, but FTE, staffing issue. Did we, do we have enough staff in place for the increased hours that we have asked you to, to serve the public?
We have, we have hired sufficient number of staff for our summer operation, yes.
Okay, so it's not a staffing issue. Okay, thank you.
So councillor Bravo, who's speaking on this, or who's moving this? Councillor Bravo?
Thank you, Speaker. My motion was really about making sure that people have accurate and up-to-date information during these heat alerts. You know, there's a pool and water play closure services alerts that we have, but during the recent closures, some locations weren't up to date, and there's a really low level of awareness in the public about the very existence of this website. Residents trying to find a pool, were, whether a pool was open, were visiting city facilities webpage where hours and amenities are listed, but often, this isn't up to date either. And information on pool closure alerts isn't posted, or they were calling 311, but only to be informed that 311 doesn't have this information. So this is, you know, a lot of things happened, there were a lot of questions about how we got there, but it's bad enough that people had to trudge out their whole families with small children to, for example, Giovanni Caboto Pool in my ward, and they were standing outside, nobody was coming outside to say the pool is closed, they didn't understand why the, why they couldn't get in, there were no explanations, they couldn't look online, and they couldn't phone anyone, and we were getting the calls and we didn't know. So we were checking webpages and they weren't updated. Things happen, heat waves are very challenging, but I think that in this case, we need to pay attention to the tools that we already have to inform people about the services that we deliver. So this pool, this motion is like, have a script for 311, allow that information to be available that way so that, you know, people aren't standing out on the street, and explore other means to make sure that when we are in this situation, people are looking for heat relief and are being exposed to heat and they're not getting that relief. And in my case, the splash pad in the same park is also not operating. And these are a lot of families with young children in a community that's, has many, many children. I brought this here because I wanted to speak to that situation and to make sure that it never happens again. Thank you.
On the motion, on favor, carried. Okay, that finishes our business. Members, before I ask for a motion to enact the general bills, may I have a motion regarding the consideration of submissions on zoning bylaw and official plan amendments? Councillor Perks, do you want to move that one?
There's, there's no bills that go with--
There it is on the screen. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Yes, Speaker, I move that the committee in council considered submissions in making a decision on zoning bylaw and official plan amendments.
Thank you.
Chair, sorry, point of order, Legal has submitted an amendment to one of my motions for CC, I'm sorry--
We're done, we're done, councillor Cheng.
31.8.
Yeah, we're done.
31.7, Legal submitted an amendment to a motion.
Yeah. We dealt with all the items, yeah.
I know, but it's, it was passed, but Legal is amending it.
Can I move to reopen the item so we can move that motion and complete the business?
No, come on, this is what happens when everybody is not in the council chambers.
Speaker, that's not our business--
Yeah, we can't manage to--
--to bring it to your attention. We can move to reopen it, address it, and be done.
Oh, please. We're in the middle of a vote.
Can we please reopen it and just--
Please, councillor Cheng.
Because it's an OLT, and we just want to--
I know, but they keep talking. Well, stop talking. Jeez, all you have is the screen with all these little heads.
The solicitor has confirmed that it does not need to be reopened.
Okay, the solicitor says it doesn't have to reopen, everything's fine. May I, may I have a motion to introduce the general bills? Who wants to do that?
I'm going to.
I did, didn't I? Okay, on favor, on favor, carried. Yeah, I was interrupted in the middle of a vote again. May I have a motion to introduce the general bills, moved by councillor Ainsley?
Good morning, Madam Speaker, the lead be granted to introduce bills 542 to 569, 572 to 617, and 620 to 644.
Shall lead be granted to introduce these bills? On favor, carried. Shall these bills be declared as bylaws and be passed subject to section 226.9 of the City of Toronto Act 2006, on favor, carried. May I have a motion to introduce a confirmatory bills? Who wants to do that?
Councillor Fletcher.
...of introduction of this motion, the proceedings of city council meeting 31, 21, 31, 31, on June 25th and 26th, 2025.
Shall lead be granted to introduce these bills? On favor, posed if any, carried. Shall these bills be declared as bylaws and be passed subject to section 226.9 of the City of Toronto Act 2006, on favor, show fans, posed if any, carried. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you to staff, thank you to staff, thank you to members of council, and to those that are on the video, the little heads there.